All right, I'm in bit and I am and I'm with no reason to be admitted.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started while they do that because we can get a couple of things accomplished. So I'd like to call to order the Town of Elon Board of Aldermen work session. This is our first work session, actually, as part of our new schedule. So today is March twenty eighth, two thousand and two, and we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance if all who can will stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the last few meetings, we have recognized that countless innocent people have lost their lives in the nation of Ukraine. So this time, I'd ask that we do a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Okay, a little ride-in item for our agenda here is to welcome a interim and new member of our team. So Pam, if you wouldn't mind introducing Carrie to us and everyone else.
Thank you. Um, so I'm leaving my position as Planning Director with Town of Elon. I've been here four years and have enjoyed very much working with this community, very special community. And we've been very fortunate to bring in a very seasoned planner as an interim planning director while Rich is in the search for my replacement. And her name is Carrie Spencer.
How do you do?
She lives in Summerfield and comes with a great deal of experience. And we've already recognized that we have some similar philosophies and just interest in how we serve our, the communities where we work. So very pleased to have her here and thank you for that opportunity to welcome her.
Thank you. Welcome, Carrie. Well, while we are welcoming folks, it's really nice to see human beings in this room, and not just on Zoom, but certainly a lot of you. So we're very excited. The next two items on our agenda are two public comment sections. The first public comment section is general, so it doesn't cover anything that's on the agenda. The second public comment section is for the Aspen Avenue issue. That's what we'll call it. So if, so at this time, we're gonna open up the public comment section that's just general. So any concerns or wishes that you have for the town that is not covered on the agenda. Also, for any public comment section, please stand, state your name and your address, and then you'll have three minutes to speak. So let's go ahead and open up the general public comment section. Okay, I'm gonna take her.
Ms. Jacob, so that one oh two, no court. My wish list, I've been asking this for years, the entrance when you go into Ashley Woods is off of Brookview, right? Brookview is maybe like this when you go in, and then when you go a few, maybe ten more feet, it gets widened. It's a traffic hazard right there. There's accidents that happen there. If someone's making a left or right out of Brookview onto Westbrook, and if you're coming from Westbrook trying to make a left into our neighborhood, you have a very small window. And you get accidents there. I asked that it widen. I know Gibsonville, I've been approached, they said no. I know under Mayor Tully, this was brought up. Elon said yes, but no one wanted to work on one side because one side's Elon and one side's Gibsonville. So the whole thing is, is I wish that the town, Elon and Gibsonville start to have a partnership because the relationship between the two towns has been horrible. This also goes to Aspen, but since this is, I will receive my comments for that afterwards, but it all goes to it. Because the second thing, when we had Ashley Woods three come in, we were told there's gonna be an entrance off Gibsonville, this or that. It never happened. It came down on Brookview. Brookview now is just like the Indy speed bump. So again, no cooperation between Gibsonville I think it was personal between the mayors, to be honest with you. But I hope that we can work and get this done because in reality is the town Elon needs to protect its citizens. And so I'm asking you to protect us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other general public comments? Any online?
No.
All right, we'll close that public comment section. So next up is our public comments related to Aspen Avenue. Did we need to have any presentation before that or no?
It's up to you. I haven't prepared anything, but I'll wing it.
Okay, I think that we'll just go ahead and open it up and just as a reminder, we'll just ask everyone to stand and share their name and their address. And we'll go ahead and open that public comment section. Each person will be given three minutes.
Hi, my name's Flan Anderson. I live at one oh nine Avenue of Trees and Elon, I've been there about eight years now. That is in the Ashley Woods. I actually prepared a small presentation, which will let you have a hard copy of. Don't you getting it on screen? Actual additional copies. You wanna share them? So obviously, the, the point at hand is the extension of Aspen Ave into the new subdivision on Park. So if you could go to the next slide, I would like to literally just talk about the access, what are the options for egress, pros and cons of those, and then just a quick. Next slide, please. So right now, there are multiple points of egress into this Owen Park subdivision or possibilities. Let's say that's what each circle represents. Ashley Woods Drive, of course, Aspen Ave, Brookfield Drive, Driftwood Drive, Spence Ave, and then on the far west side, potentially Circle Drive. All of these represent potential access points. Some are in the plan, some are not. Just for information, this is a North Carolina Department of Transportation map. The green represents Westbrook, which is five to 10,000 vehicles per day. The blue represents University, which is 10 to 20,000 per day. So next slide, please. This is actually the plot plan as submitted to the Gibsonville Board of Aldermen. What you basically see on the far left, on the westerly side, is the access to Circle Drive, which would have led to Springwood. It would have been optimal access point because Springwood is less than 5,000 cars a day. That is not part of the plan. It doesn't quite abut, and they didn't, Gibsonville did not do anything to extend that road or access point. So then you still have Ashley Woods Drive, which is at the bottom of the screen, and then you have Brookfield Drive, Driftwood Drive, Spence Ave are all part of the plan as the developer submitted it. Aspen Ave is on the far right, and quite frankly, it's not necessary to access this subdivision. That's really where it comes down to. So if we were to argue a point, Ashley Woods is over 130 homes where this new subdivision on Park is 130 residences. Ashley Woods only has two access points. They have four without accessing Aspen Ave. It really is excessive or superfluous to their needs if one were to look at it in straight mathematical terms. So next slide, please. So I would encourage you to vote to deny access to Aspen Ave. We avoid the increased traffic on Brookview. We avoid the wear and tear and the expense on that road for the Town of Elon when there's no revenue to offset that expense. It allows Owen Park to maintain four access points. And so there's no hardship imposed on that. There's no risk for Elon in regards to higher traffic, lower home values, lower tax base. And Gibsonville, quite frankly, recognizes the traffic issues on Brookview. They actually positioned stop signs on their extension of Brookview. So this is not without precedent. As far as the risks associated with denying access, of course, the town potentially exposes itself to some sort of legal action from the developer or from Gibsonville. But having four access points, their arguments, quite frankly, are pretty weak. Gibsonville has acknowledged the traffic issues with the positioning, trying to position stop signs. So again, their arguments are pretty weak. There is a negative. We have neighbors that are in that section of Ashley Woods, and this will affect Ashley Woods Drive. And quite frankly, I know that's beyond the scope of this body, but I don't want to impose hardship on them, but that is the reality of the jurisdiction. So quite frankly, in conclusion, I recommend we deny Aspen Park, Owen's Park subdivision, and keep Brookview Drive as the roadless travel.
Good evening, Tom Blue, in seventeen Brookview Drive. And I'm backed up against whatever we wanna call it. But in the 20 years I spent on the Elon Planning Board, many times people would come to me with, I want it in my backyard. Well, I'm coming to unite with, I don't want it in my front yard because Brookview does not need more traffic. I've been there 33 years and it's a world of difference, especially since it was opened up in and I was a member of the LDO Advisory Board back in oh two. And let me read from that suburban residential planning district. Three point two point one. Streets in suburban residential district must be interconnected as required in section five point seven. Well, let's go to five point seven, general street designs. The Land Development Ordinance encourages the development of a network of interconnected streets that disperse traffic while connecting, integrating neighborhoods with the existing fabric of our community. Encourages, so we have a requirement to encourage, not a requirement to reduce, not requirement to do. So the design principle of interconnection is mentioned, but not as a requirement. It's an encouragement. So I don't interpret the LDO as being that we have to open it up. Those were stated, there's three to four openings already for ingress and egress. Now, each of you know and realize that town streets, residential streets aren't supported, foundations aren't as supportive as a city connector, town connector. Brookview can't handle this for four, five years, I don't suspect. Be aware that the entire the layout that you saw, that entire layout has not been cleared yet. And the stumps haven't been removed, the cops haven't been removed from all those trees. So there's a, I don't know how many truckloads still gonna go out that entrance if we allow it. At the rate this developer has progressed five, seven, eight years. Now, I was part of a joint Elon and Gibsonville planning group, influencing group to work with the board in Gibsonville. We convinced them that that neighborhood should be like its surrounding neighborhoods, both ends of Gibsonville and the side of Elon. Fifteen thousand square feet, lots. They zoned it that way. And then under the cover of COVID, the developer convinced them to put an overlay in that would allow 9,000 square foot lots. And even though we showed them that they can get more tax revenue out of fewer larger homes and smaller homes, they still I mean, with a convincing gentleman. And now you see what we have. The board must always keep in mind their responsibility and their commitment for the safety of their citizens. Opening Aspen is not gonna help the dispersion of traffic for Elon. It's gonna help the dispersion of traffic for those that created it, Gibsonville. We don't need additional traffic on Brookview. Brookview, that whole area is a walking area. There's people walking all the time. Wanting to dark. So we don't need additional traffic on that street. Plus, we just brought up about the bottleneck at the end against Westbrook. Now we get sight. So we ask you that, that you allow Gibsonville to handle their traffic problems, which they approved, and protect the safety of us. And do not open Aspen.
Yeah, so we're taking.
My name is Ryan Crawford. I live at two oh five Long Brook Drive. Also here to oppose the opening of Aspen. Has been, been previously stated, there's no there's no financial benefit. I see liability and maintenance costs, and as a taxpayer, I don't want either one of those. By opening it, not just that, I have two small kids. And there's no sidewalk from Westbrook Avenue all the way to basically the backside of the whole Elon stretch. So the last thing I want is to have more cars up and down that road as I have two small kids trying to make my way in curb and gutter to keep them safe. And not just that, but I actually went and drove and looked at all four of the other entrances on this site plan. Like the previous gentleman said, a lot of it hasn't been cleared. It's like once Aspen stopped, everything stopped when there are viable other alternatives to get wood and supplies and everything else onto the site and off. Not just that, but when you have heavy equipment clogging up that road, it makes it more difficult for the actual residents to get in and out. So and not just that, but the other thing that was mentioned was the planning of the road and the partnership. You have 130 more houses, that's probably 260 cars additionally that will travel Westbrook. So in my, I'm not a traffic engineer, but I also know that with increased flow, you have more issues. So there needs to be a minimum center turn lane. That way you can have unimpeded traffic flow. All I got.
Young, I'm at one twenty three Avenue of Trees, been there almost 12 years. I just wanna say about all this, the traffic sucks because we went from a quiet, one-way-in, one-way-out neighborhood to people flying on Brookview. And I walk my dog twice a day. I have a kid as well. She's a teenager now, but still, we both have almost been hit many times because people fly down that street. And the police do not come and do anything about it. And I'm a former law enforcement officer, and I don't appreciate that in my neighborhood at all. That's all I gotta say. We need safe. We need to be safe. And we don't feel safe in our neighborhood because of the cars.
Name is Coach Yanis. I'm known as Palace, thousand two Brookview. With all that's been said, I'm, I'm right across from the exit of Aspen into Brookview. And I understood all the comments and written and spoken. But part of reaching a wise approach to anything is to also understand your adversary and the reasons why there is a difference of opinion. And I'm not sure I know that. I look at the maps and the distance from if we assume the church road is and the destination of all the work is similar and actually shorter from the other entrances. Why would the developer want to pick Brookview as the exit into church? Is there something we're missing? I don't get it. In, in insistence and trying to grab the Aspen exit without the, all this. Why? Do we know why? Sorry, it's a question instead of me making some statement, but it's, I think it's having a feeling about what is behind this. It is equally important to how we feel about. Well, against it, but nevertheless.
Once again, well, you heard all about Gibsonville Elon relationships through that. That brings me, soon as you enter Westbrook onto Brookview to the end. Some of the things adversarial, someone mentioned why, some of the things I read, which mean what was already said, the that we went from R fifteen to R twelve. And didn't have a permit. We started cutting everything down. So it didn't start off right. Always have been a bump home for smart growth stuff. There's things that can be done. Like everyone's, what was mentioned there, there are four other entrance exits, okay? I most equate almost what happens in Westbrook, Brookview, when you're trying to get out of the Target Shopping Center. Just, just don't want it. And we got to maintain the neighborhood's integrity. Like everyone said, it's a place people meet. You don't want it becoming a city street. This will become. Now, as opposed to the biggest con, I guess, if you worried about lawsuits. I deal with lawsuits every day of my life for the last 30 years. It's gonna happen. It won't be from this developer. It'll be from someone else. But we pay a part of our taxes again for you to protect us. So I'm asking you to protect us, protect our children. They walk the street, people ride their bikes. We need to keep it a suburban street.
My name's Julie Waller. I live at ten twenty one Brookview Drive. I did not plan to speak tonight. I'm a newbie. I'm Brookview, eight months. My husband and I have been there. When we went to purchase the house, we knew Elon very well. My sister graduated from Elon. We moved back here from the Charlotte area. So we were thrust into the housing market at a very interesting time. So we really feel like God put us on Brookview at just the right time. We enjoyed a gorgeous backyard for eight months. It now looks like a war zone. And I don't, I don't say that in light of what's going on around the world, but you know, I've learned a lot just listening to everybody. Y'all have been fighting this fight much longer than I have, but I have, I worked for municipality for 10 years. So I understand your positions and what you have to do. I also understand that Gibsonville, again, I don't, I'm not an expert in this. But what I would say is Gibsonville did not do their due diligence. To, in fact, I contacted them about a month ago because the plan says proposed plan. So I, I reached out to the planner there and said, well, if this is the proposed plan, where's the final plan? Because I'm looking at it, again, I'm new. I wanna be informed. And he said, oh, that's the final. And I'm thinking, okay, so why isn't it, why wasn't it marked final? So he basically said, this is it, these are the lots, and you know, we would love where we live. I walk every day. And Brookview is the walking area, and there are no sidewalks, lots of kids. And, and we were, we just feel really blessed to live on Brookview. If, if you just pull into that neighborhood on Halloween, we experienced Halloween for the first time, and it was incredible. How many people we met, you know, young families pulling the wagons with their kids. Can you imagine what happens if you put that entrance? You let them come from Aspen. It changes the whole dynamic of where you're living. It changes your whole community around you. So I would just, I would just ask that you really weigh this out. I am totally against it. I'm not the only one where it's in my backyard. It, it, the whole dynamic has changed already, and they haven't finished it. You know, I'm working from home. I'm watching the trees fall as the house shakes like everybody else. And then everything stopped. So how did that happen? So a couple of questions to me would be Gibson, Gibsonville blew it on approving the plan. And then, then you have this developer who did a really shoddy job, and now it's, everything's at a standstill. And I don't, you know, I don't have it the worst, and I don't regret where I live. But I would just say, you know, to protect the citizens of Elon, you know, we can't control Gibsonville, but we can control Elon.
Here in Alderman, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Jim Hogsitt. I live in Ashley Woods on Avenue of the Trees. I almost did not come here tonight. And I thought to myself, you know, there's that word sometime that haunts me called empathy. I live on Avenue of the Trees. My house is not up against this new development, so I could easily stay at home tonight and say the heck with it. But I'm not gonna do it. Because you see, I think about my precious neighbors. Houses do back up this mess, and that's exactly what it is, a royal mess. We come here tonight to be negative. I'll tell you this. One of my concerns is, and it has been this way for a number of years, I came to Ashley Woods to have peace and quiet. I bet it has to be a perfect neighborhood, no. But I think we pay enough taxes, and I don't mind paying taxes. It was money worth, but enough taxes. Okay, and the investment we have in our homes to say, let us, not me, let us have peace. Let us have some peace and quiet and enjoy where we're living. And I wanna tell you, and it started with, and nobody just you hear this council was on the council at that time, so I'm not pointing my fingers at them at all. But it started years ago with that bypass that came through. There's other lies that was told about that at the time too. Now, that's history. I realize that. But I only bring up the subject, not to be negative, but to say clearly that every time you turn around, there's something going on in that neighborhood that should not be taking place where we cannot enjoy where we're living. That's my message. If it ain't the bypass, it's a new neighborhood development. If it's not there, and thank God for the gentleman tonight who brought up that, that problem with that entrance to Brookview Drive, which is absolutely ridiculous. And I'm blaming anybody, but I will say this, somebody needs to take action to widen that because that's also important. And I wanna tell you this, and this is with all due respect to these folks that, that serve us that are sitting here tonight. If you're concerned about a lawsuit, I would like for you to entertain this thought at least. Just suppose that we were to have some kind of an emergency in that neighborhood area that resembles exactly what took place recently in Winston-Salem with that fertilizer plant. I wanna tell you, it scares me to death, and I think about it every night. Suppose that we had to evacuate the area we're in. We're already limited to the number of places you'd go to to get out of there. And then add to it that entrance that scares me to death at Brookview that is so narrow. I referred to it the other day as a pig's path. Because there's no distance there. I mean, it's ridiculous or whatever. And we're given a lot of excuses why we can't, I even said to one, as much as I don't particularly care to pay a lot of taxes. I said, I'd be willing, if you put in a one-year assessment on it, to pay for the expense of widening. It's not but a couple of hundred feet. But in the meantime, there's danger there. Danger is there. So we're talking about safety and then of course you get to the business of taking Ashley Woods and hooking it in with the new neighborhood, which is absolutely ridiculous. There's no reason for that. My message in this is not to be a sourpuss tonight, but for God's sake, leave us alone. Let us enjoy where we're living and we'll be happy paying our taxes. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Randy, I think he would like an opportunity at your role because he could have it. It's next.
So I'm just going to stand here to be, that's all right, instead of walking up there. We've I'm Joel Martin. I live on Brookview Drive, right there at the entrance of Aspen. And so pretty much I don't really need to make any points. Glenn and some of these other guys made most of the great points. I just kind of ask you guys to maybe all of you just ride down there. I met with Rich here a couple of weeks ago out there. The, the construction entrance, from what I gathered, that the permit was never approved there. And then all that came in and it was just a message, things just were not the rules weren't followed, you know, in, in this thing. And I just asked that you guys and I know, I know, can't tell Gibsonville what to do, but I don't think anybody really can, you know, from what we've gone through, but I just ask you guys, the points have been made. You guys just really look and like I said, drive, drop through there. Check out the egresses if you don't mind and see the other ones besides Aspen. You guys really kind of go to bat for us. Be great on this one.
Nina Burton, I live on 1001 Perfume Drive, right there on the corner. So we got to experience all the construction. I wasn't planning on sleeping, but the logging trucks were there every morning at whatever, six, seven o'clock. I have teenage kids that were, were blocked where they couldn't get out to go to school. My mailman, thank goodness, he was super nice. They would hand deliver me my mail because of logging trucks parked out in front of my house. When I asked why they wouldn't go to another area, one of the other four that were pointed out, their response was, this is by the loggers or the developer, was that this was the easiest place for them to get it. So I just want you guys to know that. That's what I was told because I asked lots of questions. The kids is the most important thing, that neighborhood that it's going to take somebody, and I hate to say this, to be killed at that intersection there in the Brookview and Westbrook. And I have teenagers, there's tons in our neighborhood. It is so dangerous there. You can't even, when I was coming here, I was going to make a left to come to meeting tonight. I couldn't make a left, so I just turned right. The other issue, and I know this isn't you guys over on 70, they're going to have to put a traffic light there. It's going to take somebody to get killed at either intersection for everybody to wake up and do something about it. So.
I wasn't going to speak. Majority. And bought this when it was, there were no streets or anything in it. We bought our lot and I lived on Brookview and loved it. And anyway, of course, when they opened it up, that created a bit of a problem. We knew it would, but we knew there should be another way out because mentioning if there was a disaster. When we first moved in, very soon after, there was a hurricane came through. And it, I didn't even realize living on Brookview when we left to go out that trees were down all over. If one of those trees had fallen on Brookview, we'd have been trapped. And very dangerous. And at the end of the street, there's numerous wrecks. The police cars are there all the time. And nobody slows down. I walk. It is the most dangerous place to walk. And nobody cares. It's like a racetrack. And that's my piece. It's just, we've got to do something for the safe. It's, it's dangerous. And those people that want to go through there, we're not getting any taxes on that. Can you imagine how much more paving we're going to have to do on Brookview? It's bad enough as it is. And you know, it's just that's my piece. Something has got to be done.
Could you state your name? I'm sorry.
I am so sorry. Everybody knows me. Orlean King and I live on Hooten Arbor, but I used to live on 1033.
Thank you. Sorry.
I have one more thing. My name is Bill KB. I live at 1005 Perfume, next to Joel and to Dana. You know.
I'm sorry.
I got a discount. A couple of things. I think there was a one question or one comment was made is, why does the developer want to be able to come in through? I'm in sales and marketing. One of the main reasons the person they want to open up the street, that's where the, that's how the railers want to come in. Okay. They don't want to take them through Gibsonville. You want to run for our city.
Yeah.
Number two is right, wrong or indifferent. This developer, as well as the Aldermans in Gibsonville, have shown us that they are, that they do not that they're not working in good faith with the size of lots being changed. Things of that. I don't personally see from a tax standpoint. Seems like Gibsonville is all the cake and the pie. No tax revenue. This town of Elon. Okay. But they, but simultaneously where they want to actually put more pressure on the infrastructure with town of Elon. So I would have a couple of comments. Number one is we've seen how this developer we've seen how the town of Gibsonville has worked. And certainly not been something that has been conducive to the taxpayers of the town of Elon. Number one. Number two. If Elon gets sued, if Elon does lose, I believe that there should be a proffer against the developer. They have to put traffic circles down Brookview. Because you've got to slow the traffic on Brookview. And lastly, okay, we've already changed the size of lots. We were told that the housing that was going to be developed was going to be at a similar quality as a Brookview. That first house built, yeah. Okay. And if history would begin to any indication, I'm not feeling extremely comfortable about that happening. So again, why would we allow egress into our community when you've already seen multiple actions that truly have not occurred in good faith? I appreciate your time.
Seth Cohen, I live at 122 Avenue. I wasn't going to say anything, but everybody's talked about lawsuits. Would like to say one thing because I've been practicing on this area for 30 years. And I've done a lot of land use work. I've argued for North Carolina Supreme Court on a land use case. So I do know a little bit of what I'm talking about. And I want to tell you first, if the board were to vote to close the road, they have to publish it for four weeks, then they have to have another public hearing, a formal public hearing by statute 168-299. So all of you would need to come back because that's the hearing that they use to make their decision. And under that statute, there are only two things they have to consider. And they've got a good attorney, Joe Palo, and I'm sure they're going to listen to it. But y'all won't be there when, when he's talking to you. So I just thought, if you want to know, there are only two things they consider. Whether it's not in the public interest. So they don't have to show it is in the public interest. Their question is, is it contrary to the public interest? Well, that's pretty easy. It's not contrary to the public interest to keep people safe. The second thing they have to decide are their reasonable ingress egress. In other words, the law, the statute 168-299 says you cannot land lock somebody. So if this developer or somebody had a big piece of land and there was only one way to get out, they can't land lock it. That makes sense. That's why the law is written that way. That's the only two issues they hear. Then if the developer wants to sue, which he might, I don't know. I do this for a living. So it's, you know, I represent both sides. Anybody can sue anybody. But if you want to know what happens, then it goes to Alman's County Superior Court. The judge hears it without a jury. And what does the judge consider? Two things, the same two things that these people have heard. The judge doesn't sit in their shoes. The judge just reviews it. First, the judge reviews, is it procedurally correct? Did they have, did they publish it four times? Did they have the public hearing? Did they close the road correct under 168, 296? If he did, if he says that's fine, the judge considers two things. Was there evidence in the record at the public hearing, not this hearing, but the formal public hearing? So that's when you got to come back because that's the formal public hearing. The judge decides, was there evidence in the record to support this board's conclusion that it was not contrary to the public interest? And that there was reasonable ingress and egress? If the judge says they had that evidence before them, guess what? They win. Take this case in a minute, except I'm married to someone on the council. I've taken a lot of land use cases and I've won more and I've lost. And I'm just saying that to tell you because there are a lot of people talking about, we're going to get sued. Anybody can get sued. And I cannot tell you, there's a guarantee this town is going to win. But they should. It's not a tough case because those are the only two criteria.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody else? And just so you know, our town Clarkston is not ringing. That's the timer.
Wilson, I reside at, I live near Ashley Trace, and I just wanted to as someone else mentioned, I live on the other end of the neighborhood. But like I said, we, something I really like about being a neighbor in Ashley Woods is we stick together. And my hopes are with safety and like Mr. Jacobs mentioned about the bottleneck at, at Brookview where it comes to Westbrook. Like I said, this, we've been a resident there for almost 15 years. And numerous individuals have mentioned, there's some safety issues there, but I realize there's also probably some financial related issues and probably some, some right of way issues with the, with the road being bottlenecked there. But alas, we're not going to that point right now. But my hopes are with, with prepared and non-prepared statements that everyone would give a, give some consideration to the safety. Because once somebody's, one of his children hurt and then it's, well, I thought I should and could have. It's too late then, as a lot of other people have, have brought forward there. So I would just ask on behalf of Ashley Woods, if you seriously consider not opening the Ashley Woods extension. Thank you so much.
Last chance.
Another thing? I mentioned earlier about the four the four other entrances, Aspen Avenue. Yes, it is central to, to the site. So it's cheapest for the developer to do that. But once he makes his money, he's gone. We're left holding the bag. So that's, again, that's liability. Some kid gets killed. Who's that on? It's not on him. He's done. He's gone. So that's another thing. Yeah, it might be the most convenient for him, but as the other gentleman stated, it hasn't been in good faith. Either the alderman of Gibsonville or the developer. So given that there's no competence that they'll do things in good faith now. So it's this pattern. Kind of extrapolate that you get lawsuit from somebody's, from somebody dying, not just some developer.
Yes, okay. I should make sure I have the name right.
Hey, this is really the last chance. Okay, we will close the public comment section. I want to thank everyone for being here. You are welcome to stay. We'd love to have you for the rest of the meeting and you can hear what else we talk about. But just thank you all so much for coming. It's important to have public engagement. We would love to see a room filled like this every meeting. So just so you know, we now meet the second Tuesday in the last or fourth Monday of every month. And we would love to continue to see you at our meetings.
Do you want to make a motion? I'd like to make a motion if I'm allowed. Are we making a motion? It's a work session. Well, my motion is, if I may make it, it's not as far as making a final decision on this in any respective manner whatsoever. I just know that folks here are concerned about it. Obviously, we've heard that. I had no intention of making a motion tonight. I just wanted to hear from the, the people. But I did receive an email today at 3:21 that did concern me about whether or not a permit was going to be issued prior to us making a permanent decision. And my understanding is that the staff, namely our town manager, said that there is no standard timeframe for issuing a permit. And it's his belief that it would be unjustly delayed action if an application was not made. And that there would be a lack of due process. Furthermore, in his opinion, it's unreasonable delay would certainly be unethical on our part. So my concern is that a permit is going to be issued between now and when we can make a decision as a board. So my motion would be simply, all I'm asking for is for no permit to be issued on this until we can meet as a board and make a decision. So the actual motion would be that no permits be issued to encroach on Aspen Avenue until the board decides whether or not to close the road. That is talking about two weeks. Since there are many other avenues of ingress and egress into this, I don't feel that that's a hardship to the developer at this point. I think it gives this board a chance to hear what has been said, to take it in, to talk to our attorney. But if we don't any, do anything, it's my understanding, again, I didn't know that this was going to happen until 3:21 in an email, that the power is within the staff right now to go ahead and issue that permit. And the problem that I see by that happening is if we issue that permit now and then two weeks from now we decide not to, then we might have some legal problems because we've given that to the developer and then we've taken it away. So simply, simply all I'm asking for is time for us to make a reasonable decision and to talk to our attorney. And I don't think that's a lot to ask. So that is my motion, if Madam Mayor, I'm allowed to make that tonight, is to simply put a hold. As far as I know, the permit has not even been requested yet, but I have been told that it's going to happen. And I think that we need to hold on that until we can make a reasonable decision on this. So I move that we do that. May I have a second?
A second.
It's a clarifying comment. The statutory requirements for road closure include four weeks of published advertising. So I don't think you'd be making a vote in two weeks. It would be. So I don't think you'd be making a vote in two weeks. It would be at least four weeks.
So the motion is that we delay any processing of a permit. I think my question is, is they haven't already done the permit, right? They haven't requested it. They keep saying they're going to. We've already said there's no construction traffic permitted there.
Correct.
Or we think that that's what they're going to request a permit on?
My understanding is that they are committing to no construction activity on Aspen.
So what would their permit be for then if they're wide aways from ever putting a road in there that was even permitted?
You're asking me to put myself in the developer's head. You can do a lot of, come up with a lot of reasons, but getting a permit secures your right.
It was my understanding that, and I could be completely wrong, when this first started happening, it was a negotiation, but it was between our attorney and the developer's attorney that if you don't do construction, if you cease construction on that road, then we will give you the road in order to have permanent egress and ingress. I could be completely wrong on that. I was not there for that discretion. But I think the developer thought if, and I believe the developer may be here. If the developer thought that he could not utilize the road for construction, but then would have permanent access to it, that that was something to give up in order to gain the latter. So that was my understanding. Again, I could be extremely wrong on that. But again, back to my motion, I think it's a reasonable thing to wait so we can discuss this with our attorney, so we can discuss this with each other. And if it is four weeks, I don't understand what the hardship would be on the developer when nothing has happened there so far. And no bricks have been laid, trees have not been cleared out. There's no reason for an ingress and egress at this point, especially when these folks have said there's four other ones available to that property.
Just for a point of clarification, since I seconded it. Did you put a timeframe on it?
I just said until we, I said, okay, whether or not we decide to close the road, which I assume would be at our next meeting. And then, as Pam said, we would need to put out four weeks. We would need every, once a week for four weeks, we wouldn't put out something in the newspaper that would tell people. And then we would have another public hearing and then we'd make a final decision. So the longest amount of time that I think we would be looking at is possibly eight weeks. I could be wrong in my math, but I'm looking at eight weeks.
Just in terms of clarification, until we're able to make a decision. So in other words, if we come together and say that we decide to close that road, you want to have it on hold until we make a decision or have the right to vote on that.
Right, so.
I think that's a fair assessment. I just want to make sure we're not putting ourselves in any kind of a problem with that, with that motion. Are we?
As somebody said, anybody can sue anybody for anything.
Well, that's right. And I want to make sure that we think we've got this covered. In other words, until we're actually to have that conversation and that we go through that process.
I guess the point I was trying to make to the board in the email that the woman Portland was referring to, is that we have no standards in our code in my mind, that give us the reason to deny a permit to anybody if they're looking to access one of our roads. Mostly construction based, it's, it's, you know, meet the standards of construction style and quality. Keep it clean. Those are the standards that are in our code. My dual concern is that by unreasonably delaying it, and I don't know what unreasonably delaying a decision is, on pretty much a pro forma application is viewed as denying somebody due process, because it may not just be a developer, it could be a homeowner who wants to build a driveway. And we decide, well, we're going to delay it for eight weeks because, well, we can. It could be a business owner who wants to open a new business. Be viewed as, in any application that comes to us, it doesn't have, you must make a decision within thirty days kind of language. So there's that due process issue. And quite frankly, there's professional ethics involved. We're putting staff, by doing this, in a really uncomfortable position. I think, yep, you submitted your application, you paid your fee, you meet all the standards. But we're going to sit on it. That is a real ethical issue. In my view. Happy to do more research on it. I can check with professional associations and get their view of what ethics are involved.
Where did the ethics come in when I didn't have a permit? Where did that, where did that?
So let me, let me just ask you this. Um. In terms of all right, so before we take a vote on that, what if we said, okay, so here's the thing, we could say that we want to go ahead and hold a public hearing. Right? To close the street. I'm just throwing this out as a hypothetical, just so everybody knows. Um. And then we have the public hearing and then we vote. That gives this board four weeks, to be very clear. Does that, does that eliminate the ethical concern that you have as a staff member? If we are to say that we are considering permanent closure of the street and we are going to go ahead and advertise a public hearing on that, at that point, we would then vote. They would vote. Does that eliminate that for you?
Thanks. I'm happy to check with the professional association that I belong to, that governs the ethical behavior of a town manager. I will call them tomorrow and run that scenario by them. And I will, I would say the reason I'm concerned about it is I have no professional desire or personal desire to be brought up on charges by my professional association for an ethical violation. And they do do that. They have done it in North Carolina twice in the last year. I have no desire to go through that.
So if we, as a governing board, if we said to you, town manager, we are saying to you that we are not going to issue a permit until that hearing is through, does that, does that remove you from that situation?
Under our code, board does not issue this permit. It is a staff level. Which I will say probably isn't almost every community in the state, probably around the country. Because it is, in essence, it's like a driveway. Want to vote on every driveway that, you know, for every house that gets built in this town, we can certainly change the code accordingly.
I don't know if I agree with that, though, that.
Under our code.
I have two things that say differently. So if we look, and I've stated this over and over again, if we look at one sixty eight, two ninety six in our codes, the state, that we have the power to close any street or alley either currently or temporarily. That is in the General Assembly State Codes, okay? And then when we want to go ahead and do it, there's another one. This isn't like some magical proof thing. There are statutes. And you look at one sixty eight, two ninety nine, procedure for permanently closing streets and alleys. So other people apparently do this. This is not something that we can't do. And it says exactly what you have to do. When you propose this, the council should first adopt a resolution declaring its intent to close the street or alley and calling a public hearing on the question. The resolution shall be published one week for four successive weeks prior to the hearing. A copy, therefore, shall be sent in registered or certified mail to owners of property adjoining the streets and the alleys. And then it finally says, shall be predominantly posted at least two places along the street or alley. So there's, I mean, this is how it's done if we want to do it. We have the right to do it, and here's the way to do it. And all I'm asking for tonight is for us to have some time to think about doing these things. And I'm sorry, I don't understand what's being unethical when you're listening to your constituents' concerns. I don't see anything that I feel unethical if I didn't see constituents' concerns.
Mayor? Yes. Alderwoman Borland is absolutely correct with statutes. And we've closed streets in Elon even during my time here and follow those statutes. We're really discussing two separate processes. The permanent closure of streets is regulated by statute. We have very little in our code regarding that, because we would defer to the state laws. What your manager is explaining to you is the process for allowing a connection to a street. These are obviously very related in this circumstance, but these are two separate processes. Our code of ordinances, which is our local set of laws states that making those connections is a staff level decision. And I believe that is what he was referring to earlier. It's actually our public works director that does that. And in my four years here, that has been done in conjunction with me, because I supervise the public works director. And it is a bit of a nuance that it's referred to as a driveway permit. It is the same permit we use to issue driveway connections to our streets. However, NC DOT follows the same protocol. They use a driveway permit when, for instance, our new subdivision up on Manning Avenue connects with NC DOT streets. They use their driveway permit process to accomplish that. So I just wanted to add that clarification. And I do think we're talking about two separate things. They're just very much intertwined in this particular circumstance.
Madam Mayor, can I say something? I know I'm not supposed to, but.
I don't think we can.
Best comment.
I do. So I just have a question. In my opinion, this is not a driveway. I mean, they are asking to connect a street to a street.
It's called the driveway permit that we use for this purpose, building a driveway.
Right.
It's the same permit that we use for driveways.
And from our ordinances, our, our board has no, you're saying our board has no right to deny that.
It specifically states that the public works director shall issue driveway permits. And this is the process that street connections are also made to our streets. And that is, it is not very intuitive, because this is different from a driveway. Our ordinance was set up this way, I suspect, following NC DOT's protocol.
And if I could, and my only point on all this is that if we had a code that gave us standards to deny a driveway permit or a street connection permit, we'd apply them. We just don't have those standards in our code.
I think that we need to consider that in the LMO that's currently being written, Carrie. So that's the first thing. Um. I don't have a vote, but what I will say to the board is that I do think that there's some problems where putting staff in a sticky situation. But I also think that there's issues on the other side that it would be my preference for us to consider putting the closure out there for us to have a public hearing, a formal public hearing. And then we can make a decision at that point. The issue with that.
Clear on that, Madam Mayor? I'm asking, are you asking us to make a different decision than this motion that?
We don't have a right to make that motion, evidently.
That's what I'm kind of getting that impression too. And I'm just wondering, are you asking that we might need to consider doing something quickly at this stage?
Well, I think that.
If I could, and this, again, we're talking different levels of nuance. If the board were to take a vote tonight along lines of what Alderman Borland has suggested, with some changes. At our April twelfth meeting, one of the things that we will be discussing is adopting a resolution to close Aspen, some portion of it, or whatever. That becomes a resolution, to do a resolution, if you will, puts everybody on notice that that is the case.
That's what I was concerned about when I asked the second question, because I felt like we really weren't accomplishing what we needed to accomplish. Kind of nebulous timeline there. So what you're saying is, is that if we correct this motion, that would put you guys in a better situation.
And that's the question I would follow up on in the morning with my professional association, ethicists who they employ. My point is, everybody's on notice. And that's the intent of this board. And somebody may apply, and whether a permit is granted or not, in that two weeks or in that eight weeks, whatever it may be. Nobody can say that they were caught off guard if the board ultimately decides to close the road. Helps to assuage any issue that they come from, gee, you know, we started the process, so they applied. You're putting them on notice. I'm not an attorney. I can't tell you that swings the law on this. But I think it does put you in a, puts the town in a stronger position in terms of if we decide to close the road. Everybody knew about it. We notified people right off the bat that we were going to start taking these steps. Somebody knowing that applied, and they need to live with the consequences of whatever our future actions may be. That may help solidify a case if it's ever taken.
I have one more question for Rich, and that is, isn't parking legal on that, that part of Aspen Road? Parking legal there on the street?
I believe so.
So anybody could park there on both sides of the road, fill up that space.
Yeah. We've been told not to.
What I'm just saying is, there's not illegal, so.
Not, but we've been asked to move our cars so that they can get in and out.
Oh, they've asked you, developers, okay. I believe parking is allowed on Aspen Avenue in that section, yes.
Make a better motion then?
I'm of the mind that I would be ready to pull my second if you don't.
So the motion needs to be more.
I was, I think what Rich said, and I don't know if it was recorded.
Making, if you choose to do so, you are making a motion that on our April twelfth agenda, that we consider a resolution.
I'm making a motion. Then on our April twelve agenda, that we make a motion to consider closing Aspen Avenue.
I'd second.
Any discussion? Why don't you have been awfully quiet today?
Well, I think, and I appreciate the turnout today. It's been, it's great to hear people share what their feelings are. I think we all knew that land was going to, something was going to happen. Fears it's not going to happen the way we would have hoped it would, it's happened. Not to our fault. Elon, my partners at Gibsonville, let us down, let you down. Are there any people here that live on Brookview, Gibsonville residents?
We're Gibsonville residents.
We're on Ashley Wood, we're on Ashley Wood Strive, we're.
So, so they're like not homes, I think, along that stretch. How vocal have you been to your town? Those are things that I think are going to make a difference. We have a certain limited amount we can control. Susan and Gibsonville. They elect those officials. They appoint their plan board. I, my concern is, I don't want to put our staff in a situation where, from an ethical standpoint, they're going to be placed in a poor light. I think you're right. Your point being is, if Dr. Stein wanted to put another driveway in front of his house, and I was opposed to it.
Because we live across the street.
I told the town manager, drag that out. And that's what it would appear as. And I think that's a concern. I think that's your concern. Will not be consistent.
I believe that this I believe that this motion will at least I believe that this, I believe that this motion will at least, as Rich said, will make it clear that we're moving in that direction. And that, and that he has also pledged to us that he will call and report to us if there's any real ethical violations that we might be putting you in danger of. But that, the reality is, is that even if we move this tonight and pass it, that there's still a chance that, that we would have to, or we may, or one of our staff members may approve a, for them to move forward with this, they would give them that, that ability. But that doesn't mean that we've done something wrong because we've gone on record. If we go on record tonight, closing that, I think that's the best we can do. If anyone has a different feeling, or if there's any staff people, I think that's why I'm level for it.
Does change at all if we held a special meeting? If we did something next Monday, so instead of two weeks from now, we say we're gonna hold, so we shorten that time, and we have to.
Have to give it two weeks.
But a special meeting.
The resolution.
Not for the resolution.
A meeting, you don't have to wait two weeks.
Okay.
So if we called a special meeting for two days from now, or next Monday, a week from now, would this help alleviate some of the potential of being brought upon the ethical board, their professional association? Is there anything bound, binding us to April 12th?
Other than that's your next meeting.
Other than that's our next meeting.
I, I mean, the process is the process. After resolution, you publish it four weeks in a row, you hold your hearing. If that process, if you wait till April 12th to start it, you know, we're, we're six weeks out. If you start it next week, it's only five weeks. You know, it.
Because I don't think if.
Anything that puts it out there earlier, I think strengthens your hand. If it comes to a challenge that we're, we're, you know, we put it out there as early as we possibly could. So everybody knew about it, and then we made a decision to go and actually go ahead and do that.
Even if they haven't applied for a permit, if they apply for a permit tomorrow, you know, that's six days or four business days. I think that is reasonable time for a permit not to be passed.
Well, I, I don't disagree.
So I would, since the two motions have, since two motions have already been done, nay, and then I would vote, I would change the motion to do a special meeting.
We can withdraw the motion.
We can offer an amendment.
You mean, you can't just like, give us a resolution before we end this meeting?
That's what, what, what are we putting people, yeah, are we, are we giving them enough time if we? What is, what's your thinking, Quinn? What's your thinking?
Well, my thinking is Rich's email today about not a reasonable time of giving a permit. And it is on a staff level, so I'm, I'm, I'm aware of that, that if we shorten that time to two weeks, I can understand if it's a cut and dry case. Right, it's like, yeah, we're doing everything they're doing.
I, I will say that just because you've adopted a resolution and you start advertising it. Does North Carolina allow moratorium, moritorias?
Yes.
That would be perhaps another avenue, and I don't know how that would look. Another we can figure out for next week is whether you can actually adopt a moratorium.
Can the mayor pro temp vote if he's residing over the meeting, since I will not be in the country?
So he can preside and vote.
As mayor pro temp, yeah.
I'm all the country.
Thinking about doing it this Thursday?
Or I mean, maybe Monday, just because that's our, would be our, would have been our regular meeting. And I think that's a reasonable time to hold a permit until we can talk about it and a resolution and do that. Where April 12th, I can see where staff.
But in my not hearing that the permit would be held until the vote is taken, which is still following the four week advertising period. I think what, by the special call meeting, you're shortening the timeframe, but only by perhaps five weeks instead of six, or four instead of five, or something along those lines. Excuse me, Pam, I'm sorry. But at least at that point, we would have a resolution, or be a public resolution, and then wait that amount of time. So we as a board would make a resolution, letting people know where we stood on this issue.
I guess for me, I want to make sure that we can kind of cover both things. I want to make sure we're not putting the staff in. I do not want that to happen, but I do want us to be able to reasonably deal with this situation as well. Appreciate all the comments. I can understand why you're very upset, I would as well. So we won't handle that judiciously, but I don't want to put our town staff in any ethical danger there. If there's a way we can craft a resolution, a motion, that's kind of how. And, and we can look at the, the ability. We can look at the issue of a moratorium even. That, that's, that would perhaps be the clearest way is because there's a moratorium, we're not issuing anybody a permit.
So we're saying that we would make a motion on moratorium.
In a resolution on closing.
Let me make sure, a moratorium would constitute issues of no permits or just permits?
No driveway permit, or?
I, I'd have, I'd have, I'd, I'd want to talk to our attorney.
That's my concern is.
Yeah, because the, typically you would see a moratorium. If something is about to happen that you don't have the capacity for, whether it's code based, infrastructure based, or something like that. Or a moratorium until you can remedy the situation so that you're prepared. Whether that's, gee, we found a major loophole in our permit system that allows driveways and or road connections with, with limited control on behalf of the town. We need to hold a moratorium until we can adopt revised ordinance that gives us the control that we're looking for. I want to talk to, to the, our attorney about specifics on whether it's in an area, whether it's across the board, and, and I just don't know that right now.
So we can't vote for that right now?
I guess what you're, what you're voting on, or what, what the motion right now is, is to announce that next week, or whenever, you're gonna look at a resolution. Also say, and the ability to adopt a moratorium. So that you would, you're saying we're gonna take two actions, assuming we have the legal right to do it, which I think we do. Say, without this resolution to start the road closure process, take up a resolution to start the road closure process, and we're gonna look at a moratorium that would prevent, would eliminate essentially the ability to issue driveway permits until we rectify our, our town code. And between now and then, I'll have a better understanding from our attorney as to what the scope of that moratorium would look like.
It would be in our best interest to have a special meeting then, would that be in our best interest at this point? Getting conflicting information because Pam didn't make it sound like that one would make a big difference, but, but I hate to wait two weeks for that whole, so.
No, it's. I think the, the goal of the, that's, that's being discussed is, all right, how do we do this in the face of perhaps a pending application? And I would say at least the sooner that you lay your mark down, the better, that improves your standing. You, by announcing it tonight, you've taken the first step. Everybody's aware of what you want to be doing, and next week starts that process. You know, we're, tomorrow's Tuesday. We, I, I've already told the, the developer that, you know, we're going through staff changes. So there will be a delay in issuing it. My concern is, I, I, I don't feel it's ethical to say, we're gonna wait eight weeks to look at your application.
I mean, I feel like two weeks is reasonable for a permit application.
There's no standard timeline for this. And so for me, if it was a normal driveway, if it was something that was a normal thing that comes up all the time, it wouldn't be a big deal. But we're not talking about something normal, we're talking about Gibsonville and Elon and concerns that these citizens have. So it's, it's not like we're trying to change the precedent here. This is a very unusual situation. This is not, I would never say that this is something that would be on a regular basis. This is a very unusual situation that works.
But we're still in a kind of a technical situation here. In other words, do we need to meet sooner? And we need some advice that we probably should.
It can only strengthen your, your position if you meet sooner.
So what I'm hearing is, is that we would need to amend the, the motion. But does that mean we also need to add another motion declaring a special meeting? Do we need to have a motion for a special meeting then as well?
Special meeting can be called by chair and a board member, or whatever the combination, two board members.
So we're gonna have to make another motion for that. But, so did we, could we agree on a, a sooner time right now? I mean, I know that Emily's looking like she's not gonna be available, but we have a mayor pro temp. And he's willing, if he's willing and we're, and there's enough of us here to make this happen. Would next Monday be the best possible earliest date for us?
I don't know, I fly back on Monday, I could maybe get here. I don't know what time my flight lands.
Or if it'll be on time.
Or.
Well, what you're saying is, is that you could possibly be here on Tuesday, but.
Does it matter if you, if you can't vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't vote.
Yeah, so this is a special meeting anyway.
As long as Mark.
As long as we have.
That's correct. So that would be Monday, April 4th, 6:00 PM. So.
Six o'clock?
You can, so, okay, so you could amend, if you were, if you were the motioner, if you would amend the, the, or make a friendly amendment to, to once again amend this motion to do your exact same wording, but to put it on Monday, April.
I've been told that there's a date going on.
I mean, I'm, I would do it, but.
We understand that the final four will be done, and there'll be a championship game, and.
Yes, this, this, this is.
Be playing, I'm not sure, but anyway. But, but yeah, I, I don't think that this will take long because we would not have the hearing that night. Just. Decide on a resolution. And now to ask staff, is that enough time to put together?
We'll make it enough time.
Very nice, we're saying.
It's our job.
Okay, so we are amending?
Don't ask for the packet on Wednesday.
So I would like to make a resolution or amend the, you wanna make a new one, or I amend the old? Okay, I'd like to amend the old resolution that we meet on April the 4th to vote on a resolution as to whether to close Aspen Avenue through traffic and.
I changed my second to. Is that acceptable?
And before there's a, you also want on that agenda, issue a moratorium?
Yes.
Yes, but, yes.
The second? Randy?
I, I affirm that second.
All in favor? All right. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Well, thank you all again. I hope you'll still stay, but you're welcome to go. Two minute recess because someone needs to.
Thank you so much. Audience discussion, not that it'd be up to them.
No, no, you're fine.
So, you're gonna get that driveway after all.
We're not gonna send it to the board.
Right, moving on to the next item on our agenda, public hearing for the rezoning request, RZ number 2022-01 submitted by Elon Self-Storage. And I believe Mary Catherine is doing a presentation.
And if I could just say as we introduce this, that, that our applicant is in the room, and I think he's probably very relieved to know that the entire room didn't come here.
That mine was as emotional as the other one.
This is for rezoning request, RZ 2022-01. This request is being made by Mr. Jones on behalf of Elon Self-Storage LLC. Mr. Jones has applied for a planned district classification for the property having the address of 830 West Haggard Avenue. Is the property near the on-off ramp? So the parcel size is 3.2 acres. And, and it is changing from commercial district to industrial district. The parcel is joined by industrial zone properties to the south. Properties immediately to the north and east are zone public institutional. Properties to the west, University Drive on Off Ramp are NCDOT owned. Mr. Jones intends to expand his self-storage facility. That is the, that was the purpose of the rezoning request. Due to the existing commercial zoning designation, the use is considered non-conforming and is restricted from expansion by the LDO currently. If rezoned to the industrial district, any future, any future expansion of the use would require a special use permit. Such uses are only permitted in Elon's industrial district and require a special use permit where additional conditions may be imposed in order to ensure that the proposal meets all the specifications of the LDO. Will be visually and functionally compatible with this running area, will not material endanger the public health or safety, and will not substantially injure the value of the zoning property. And the property is joined by commercial zone properties to the east and public institutional zones, properties to the northeast. Properties across the highway ramp are zone commercial and to the south, properties are zone industrial. Of the requested zoning and all of the different properties that are the new joints. Here is the district vicinity map. You can see all the different uses of the zoning property. And the subject property is outlined in black.
The purple, um, purple, it, there represents industrial. So to the south of Haggard, there are some industrial uses and zoning. Red, you're looking at the subject property or commercial zone. And then that bluish is the public institutional. And that is mostly undeveloped property owned by the university that includes Moon Elon. And I think this is where the upscale facility is located.
The blue section, Jason, to that property, isn't that a garage?
It's a house they tore down some years back, this town did, or the city did, somebody did.
There's a garage.
Yeah, it's, it's a couple of doors down in the section. That's right, that's right.
I was trying to figure that out.
And Elon bought it. I tried to buy it and then Elon stepped in and bought it right at the last minute, which is fine. I got other uses of my money and, but, uh, anyway, that's, that's, uh, it was an old house, so it's a vacant lot now. They tore the house down.
So I'm clear, are we talking about, because I drive this every day, that greenhouse that's in the corner? Is that what we're talking about, that's right on that edge where you make the turn to go to the loop? Are we talking about that house?
Greenhouse is on your property, isn't it, Mr. Jones?
It's a white house now.
Oh, it's a white house.
Because I painted it, yeah. Moved in two nights a week. I live in Wilmington most of the week. I come up there, yeah, well, I spend, my business is in Greensboro, my family moved to Wilmington. So I come up, work a couple of nights and stayed there. So I tried to dial it up, spiff it up a little bit. It looks nicer than it used to, as, as does the facility. So, uh, because we just painted it all. But anyway, uh, that's my two nights a week residence, I guess you could say.
Thanks for the clarification, appreciation.
No, it's, uh. That's right on the corner, sort of diagonally across from the convenience store. And we're trying to get grass to grow for the first time in 30 years. So we're trying.
So the existing commercial district is described in the LDO as follows. The commer, the commercial planning district accommodates a wide range of existing commercial sites. Uses within this district will not only serve the Elon community, but travelers are along the US 70 and NC 100 corridors. The intent of this district is to provide an opportunity for economic development with convenient automobile access, minimal traffic congestion, and reduced visual clutter along designated commercial corridors. The proposed industrial district is described in the LDO as follows. The industrial district accommodates existing and future manufacturing, wholesale, and warehouse uses. This district is intended to enhance the economic viability of the town without imposing significant impacts to adjacent properties. This is a table and it summarizes the allowable uses on the existing proposed district categories. The placement of an S indicates that a special use permit is required and R indicates the additional requirements specified in the LDO are needed for approval of these.
Right, that slide, slide is a little bit washed out on, on the screen. But I think what you're seeing is where these two columns on the right are, are green, the allowable uses line up between the two districts. And then where it's reddish or pink, uh, there's a use that one district allows and the other doesn't. The reason that this is important is because although Mr. Jones has stated that he does not intend to do this, or he has no immediate intent at least to do this, rezoning it to industrial, it's set up to any of the allowable uses in the industrial district. We came to you with this proposal, or at least after discussion with Mr. Jones and the fact that he wanted to expand the use and was prohibited from doing so. The most reasonable way to correct, correct that was to remove the non-conforming status of the zoning by rezoning from commercial to industrial. That being said, he could tear down his facility and build something else that would be allowed in the industrial district if the zoning were approved.
That's the right column, is that correct? Or recycling. I'm having just a little trouble with, with the black box in there. I just don't, I wasn't sure which one.
What is the R mean?
Means that it's allowed with requirements that are specified in the LDO.
And what does that's, and is that outdoor, is it not outdoor storage because it's indoor?
We do both.
Warehousing.
Is that what we're?
Existing uses warehousing.
Yes.
Oh, there it is, self-storage.
One on the bottom.
Okay.
And I'm having trouble seeing it from this distance.
Okay. And the planning department determined that rather than a special use permit, that it was in the best interest.
He's not eligible for a special use permit in the commercial district. It's not allowed under any circumstances. He has, in order to remove the non-conforming status, he has to be rezoned industrial. When he decides to expand, he would need to come to you with a proposal for a special use permit where you would have some, uh, that, that we actually changed this about two or three years ago in the LDO to, to create some, um, architectural standards and other means for the, that particular use to fit in better in the community, particularly where it's adjacent to resident. Has to do with type of exterior building materials, the, the paving, the lighting to prevent light trespass and screening and that sort of thing.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So there's been some discussion, there's been some meetings about a Haggard Avenue streetscape project. How does, how would that impact this area of Haggard Avenue?
Um, this particular proposal really doesn't impact it at all. He's not proposing any changes to the property with this. It's just to, to change the zoning designation. We talked a little bit about the existing ingress and egress points. He's not proposing any changes there. If, if, uh, we don't have recommendations from the study for this portion of Haggard yet, we'll have them sometime later this year. And it may include that there's some sort of multi-use path or sidewalk on that side of the, of the road. But, um, really his continuation of the existing use, I just don't see there being a conflict with future streetscape.
So this change would make no, it would, would not exclude us from doing anything that we were hoping to maybe do down there.
No, absolutely not. Particularly in this case where he's not really proposing a change in use. He's just proposing a designation that allows him to continue with the existing use.
That's a good question. If, if I'm seeing this right, and I'm sorry, my eyes have not, aren't as good as they used to be. On the proposed section where it starts listing, yes, yes, after the noes. Right now, obviously you want to keep it the way it is, but if, if it were sold, does that mean it would be open to a recycling center or a slaughterhouse or a trucking and transportation terminal because it's been rezoned?
Yes, that's what I was stating earlier, that anything that's allowed in the, in the industrial planning district would be, would be at his disposal through, through this, if he.
That's on our current LDO.
That's correct, that's correct. If, so if this were approved, yes, all those options would be, would be available to him. Although he states that, that that's not his intent, it's still legally, he would be allowed to. As we continue to work on the LMO, I would, uh, actually what we've, what we're proposing is to split the industrial district into light industrial, which would include something like this where there's not any actual manufacturing occurring. And then perhaps a, a heavy, heavy industrial that would capture some of the specific uses that you just mentioned.
But if it has an R or an S by the yes, that means that, um, that they would have, still have to come back and ask permission to do that, right?
It would mean if, if for the S, they would need to come back and ask for permission for the specifics of how they're going to build, not for the use, because the use would already be granted through this rezoning. If there's an R next to it, it means that there are some specific requirements in the LDO that already apply to the use, and they tend to be rather minimal. They might have something to do with ingress egress. It might have, um, uh, something to do with additional screening next to a incompatible use or something like, something along those lines.
Yeah, I think you said this, but there's no access from the university ramp to that property allowed, or is it?
I'm sorry, Mike.
Is your access allowed from the university ramp to that property? Those are the state easements, why is that? What restricts it?
I guess it was built before the ramp was and there was no access ever provided there. He would need a gateway permit. NCDOT.
DOT?
Yes, it would be DOT.
And how the DOT limits access on University Drive?
Yes, sir.
Is there a part of that? There was a discussion I had with DOT a couple of years ago about a piece of land that they own. We talked about driveways and we're trying to sell a sliver of land. And, um, they made the comment that there are a limited number of access points to university on the ramp. Now to toward that limited number.
Okay.
Is there a limitation to the, to the stories, limited stories? Can be two-story, three-stories? I mean, I see some nice storage units that are being built along University Drive that mine is the exit.
I have seen that and I'd have to go to that specific language, but, um, he would come to you for that special use permit before he built any, anything else on the property. I mean, there, there's multiple levels of sort of, um, I guess, protection. When we talk about this particular chart, uses by right are those uses that are, I guess, the least egregious on the list. And then, uh, something that has an R next to it is something that maybe slightly more concerning and the LDO has built in some, some specific requirements there. And then special use permit, uh, which does include the, the, the self-storage that requires the special use permit where you would, and some others, the slaughterhouse and some of the other, others that were mentioned earlier would require a special use permit so that it would come back through the boards for approval.
Can I make a couple of comments? And.
Yeah, if we, Jones, if you wouldn't mind, let, um, let's get through the presentation and then we'll absolutely, we'll turn it right over to you for any additions or corrections that you want to bring to the board.
And so there's, there's the existing site conditions. The subject property is currently developed. The site is located beside of the on-off ramp and adjacent to properties on industrial and vacant parcels owned by the university. There are currently five self-storage buildings with several vehicles behind stored on the site. And the site contains no known environmental concerns and exhibits adequate sightlines to allow for safe ingress and egress at the existing driveway. So here is a, the map, I don't know, I can't see the text in here. Anyway, um, this is just another map with the subject property indicating commercial, industrial, and public institutional and how adjacent they are to the, to the subject property. Rezonings are treated as amendments to the LDO and map and receive a recommendation from the planning board in advance of the public hearing and final decision by the report of alderman. Zoning considerations must address the potential for the decision to be classified spot zoning. While not illegal in North Carolina, spot zoning must be clearly supported by reasonable basis. Staff has provided an assessment of the request using four points of consideration offered by David Owens of UNC School of Government. And the first factor to be considered is determining whether spot zoning is reasonable to the size of the track. The general rule is that the smaller the track, the more likely the rezoning will be held invalid. However, it is important to consider the size of the track in context. A one-acre parcel may be considered large in an urban area developed in the 1920s, but very small in the midst of an underdeveloped rural area. The total proposed for rezoning is 3.2 acres. Properties fronting the same side of Haggard Avenue vary in size from 0.15 acres to over 25 acres. The 25 acre parcel is owned by university and is known as Moon Elon, as Pam, as Pam said before. While it has only plus minus 100 feet of Haggard Avenue road frontage, it extends to the north and borders the subject property. Properties on the south side of Haggard range from above and minus 1.5 acres to just under 10 acres and include active manufacturing facilities and a gas station. The average lot size for all lots fronting West Haggard within a quarter mile of orders. Elon's jurisdiction is three point, is three acres on the north side and 2.82 acres on the south side. And the area proposed rezoning is very similar to other commercial lots in the city.
What that last sentence is intended to convey is that we did not go into Gibsonville's jurisdiction to, to do this sort of comparison of lot sizes. We stopped, we stopped just within our own jurisdiction. We could have, but I think. We could have, but I think we would have found something very similar if we had.
And the second factor in a spot zoning analysis is compatibility with the existing comprehensive zoning plan. This involves inquiry into whether the zoning fits into a larger context involving rational planning for the community, whether set forth in a formal comprehensive land use plan or reflected in an overall zoning scheme. Zone regulations must be based on an analysis of the suitability for land development and existing and needed land uses. To the extent that a small area rezoning fits into a logical pre-existing plan that is clearly based on this type of analysis, it is much more likely to be upheld. The future land use and conservation map incorporated in the town's current comprehensive land use plan adopted in 2019 indicates employment uses for the subject property. The plan's description of employment uses includes the accommodation of light industrial uses. Storage uses would fall under that description, although there is not a focus on employment in a storage facility. However, the use does generate tax revenues for the town in the form of property taxes and retail taxes. Because the current commercial zoning designation for this property creates a non-conforming use, the owner is prohibited from expanding the use without the rezoning, without rezoning that property and removing the non-conforming status. The light industrial category that might include many warehouse self-storage uses is not accommodated in the map, although this use is presented on property currently. So compatibility with the land development plan, and I'll show you in the next slide, the future land use map. Relevant goals and objectives offered by the plan include promote and ensure quality governance, stewardship of public resources, and sustainability of services, and to ensure adequate plans are in place to support existing and future development. Among the plan's key recommendations are the following. Focus on retention of existing industry and employment centers and manage growth to utilize existing infrastructure capacity and discourage growth in conservation areas. This is the proposed land use map from the land development plan, and the subject property is writing here in future employment. The third factor in spot zoning analysis is who benefits, who is harmed by the rezoning, and what the relative magnitude of each consequence is. If the zoning is granted, will it greatly benefit the owner? Will he or she be seriously harmed if it is denied? Same questions must be asked for the neighbors and the community at large, and then the effects on all three must be balanced. In a spot zoning challenge, the courts, rather than the governing board alone, review and weigh the balance of harm and benefit created by rezoning. Although the court may be sympathetic to a situation in which there is a considerable benefit to the owner and only modest harm to others, even a substantial benefit for the owner will not offset substantial harm to others. There's an extension of the benefits and detriments. The property is currently developed under the commercial zoning designation to include self-storage buildings. Use was grandfathered in and is still being claimed. There is adequate existing safe ingress and egress to the site, and the use produces less traffic than is typically produced by commercial uses. Applying the industrial designation to the property is not expected to create hardships to the neighborhood at large. No change in it, there's no change in the current use and only potential expansion of the use as allowed by ordinance is expected. Fourth factor in spot zoning analysis is the relationship between the proposed uses and the current uses of adjacent properties. The greater the disparity, the more likely the rezoning is to be held illegal. The existing uses of nearby properties include commercial, public institutional, industrial, NCDOT-controlled runway, and vacant properties. Here are some property street views for you coming down from the ramp. Well, there's a different, this needs to be, house that is now white. I was actually pretty scared when I was out there putting signs, because I was kind of in their yard, and I was like, oh my gosh, we're going to be really worried for putting signs up close to our yard. Hopefully, he owns this space. That's fine. This one in the front. You see the stored cars and RVs in the back? This is the subject property. The NC general statute required that the board adopt a statement of land use plan consistency. The statement included with the planning board's recommendation and the Board of Alderman's final decision shall describe whether the action is consistent with adopted plans and explain why the board considers the action taken to be reasonable in the public interest. In Vision Elon 2040, Elon's comprehensive land use plan lists among the its recommendation the following. Support rezoning application for changes in zoning that demonstrates the intent to implement the plan and amend the town's LDO to facilitate future development and redevelopment as described in this plan. To continue investigating how the town of Elon committee members conceptualize the small-town feel of the town of Elon and incorporate these findings into the LDO in ways to protect the character and quality of life of the community. And encourage mixed use development that blends a variety of uses, including office space, residential, shopping, entertainment. The consistency statement drafted by staff and recommended by the planning board states that the proposal is consistent with the comprehensive land use plans recommendations shown in the previous slide, and that it is reasonable and in the public interest, and that it provides flexibility in tailoring development proposals and uses to better meet recommendations in the plan, allowing for allowing for specific mixes of uses and creating development projects that contribute in positive ways to the character and quality of life in Elon. The board may adopt this statement as is or amend it in any way that they feel appropriate. Recommendations and suggested motions. Staff will make a request during the April 12 meeting that the board makes two motions, one for the adoption of the ordinance to rezone, and one to adopt a consistency statement, either the consistency statement provided by staff and recommended by the planning board or one of their own making.
Before we move on, and I know she wants to allow Mr. Jones opportunity to speak, I just want to clarify about the consistency statement that was given to the planning board and what they what they are recommending be included. And it states that the future land use and conservation map included in the plan indicates employment uses for the property. While storage facilities do not generate high employment numbers, the plan's description of employment uses include the accommodation of light industrial uses such as storage uses. Two plan goals and objectives that are relevant are to promote and ensure quality governance, stewardship of public resources, and sustainability of services, and ensure adequate plans are in place to support existing and future development. And then lastly, key recommendations of the plan of focusing on retention of existing industry and employment centers and to manage growth to utilize existing infrastructure capacity and discourage growth in conservation areas. The Board of Alderman concludes that the above described amendment is reasonable in the public interest because any expansion of the use will be conditioned through a special use permit process requiring approval by the town's elected body because the proposed use serves an established need for the community, and because the use, even if expanded, has the potential to have fewer negative impacts such as traffic and noise to the area when compared with uses allowed under the current commercial zoning. I just want to clarify that because I think we had some recommendations on the on the screen just a moment ago. And with that, Mr. Jones, please add or questions from the board as you see fit.
Sure. Well, thank you. You know, thank you for considering this this request. This, the zoning that we currently have goes way back, back to prior when I purchased the property. It goes, I think they redid everything in the county all at one time, 15, 20 years ago, something like that. I'm not exactly sure. So why this particular property, which was in its current use then was was sort of zone non-conforming when they rezoned everything? I can't answer why that happened. Somebody may have had a reason why they did that, but you know, it seems to me that I don't know, I don't know why it was done, why we were zoned commercial and across the streets industrial when we were had an industrial use for that property, but that's the way it was. We are grandfathered in with our usage today. I'll tell this little story, I guess, I don't know that anybody here even remembers it, but we, I went through the planning department here after I bought the property, and we built a 5,000-square-foot climate-controlled building. I'd crooked out all the i's, crossed all the t's, worked with Sean Tensor, I guess was his name when Sean was here. And we built a 5,000-square-foot, and I, back when this was all happening, I, you know, I wasn't as, you know, didn't have the financial resources I have today, but we we built it, we paid cash for things when we buy them and when we do them. And so we we built this 5,000-square-foot building. Well, a few years later, we went to to talk about the same conversation we were having, and I went with an attorney here in town. He went down there with me, and we had a conversation with Sean, and I think the town manager, somebody was also in on that. And they told us that our building of that 5,000-square-foot building should not have been permitted. And my attorney left the meeting, and we, he was, he was almost shaking because the town of Elon could have required us to tear that building down. There was a Supreme Court ruling at this big tall high-rise in New York City that they permitted and granted permission and so on was they shouldn't have granted that permit, and they made them tear that high-rise skyscraper down. But the the town sort of just let it quietly go. I mean, you know, they were nice, they kind of confirmed they weren't going to do that, but this would help us breathe a little slightly siren. You know, I don't know what legal ramifications would be if you tried to go in there and tell me to tear it down today. I guess I could convert it to a commercial use of some sort, put a plumbing retail store there or something like that, but that's not, not, you know, quite what we want to do. So anyway, that's, it would help us get our 5,000-square-foot climate-controlled building into conformity. The the proposed expansion that we are, would like to do at some point, if you, we're full now today, Elon's just getting out for school, we got a waiting list, we have, we don't have no units for the kids, you know, to use. So there's a need for us here, you know, it's not, I remember talking at the, when we met with the planning board, that if you go on social media, self-storage isn't exactly one of the favored subjects or when it comes up, you know, it's not a, it's not a really favored kind of, everybody wants some chic restaurant or whatever, self-storage in on there until they need to store some some stuff somewhere, you know, store their stuff. So and then all of a sudden, it's a much more favored kind of thing. I have, we painted the facility, it's not that green and red stuff looking that was on the pictures anymore. I've dolled up the house on the corner a little bit. We have no plans to turn it into a slaughterhouse or anything like that. I say this with sincere humility, I'm one of the most blessed and most fortunate guys that you'll ever meet, but that thing is a cash cow. I mean, it just throws off cash like you would not believe. It's paid for. I don't say that in a bragging sort of way. My point in saying all that is that there's no way I'm going to turn it into a slaughterhouse or anything else. I mean, there's nothing that you could put on that corner that's going to be any more lucrative than than a self-storage facility, quite honestly. I'm building, I built one in Wilmington, I'm building two more down there. That's not my profession. I'm a CPA, and I have a investment management firm. We manage a couple hundred million dollars, you know, with, for people. So I, but I'm developing, doing all this stuff on my own, but I have no plans to turn it into a slaughterhouse, and I, if I sold it, nobody that bought it would want to turn it into, you know, a fancy chicken coop. It just is too much. The cash that comes off that thing would would just blow your mind. And again, I'm not saying that boasting or like I'm some big hotshot guy or something. That's not my, that's not my my style, or my, I mean, I'm just very fortunate, very blessed, but I say that to let you know that even if I sold it, I get, I probably get three or four letters a month from people wanting to buy that facility from all over the country. The one I have in Wilmington, much bigger, it's new, nice stucco, I get, I get, I get investment banking people from New York City who want to buy, paying these numbers that you just would not believe. So I say all that to say it isn't going to be anything but a self-storage facility. All we are proposing to do, you won't even see what we do. You can't see it from the road, it'll be on the back section of that property. It'll be, you know, some more long skinny buildings that run back, there's a cell tower that's in the back, it's not ours anymore. We sold, I sold that lease and used it to buy one of my partners when I first, when we first did it, so, but we'll just have some long skinny buildings, you can't see it from the bypass. Really, you can't see it as you come down the exit ramp, you can't see it from the front. I don't think it would have any visual impact. So all I'm really requesting is let's move it to the same zoning as across the street, the zoning that it's grandfathered in for, the zoning that my self-storage, the climate-controlled building needs so that you don't make me tear it down, and or you could possibly come ask me to tear it down. But, you know, and we're, we're trying to run a nice clean, I'm trying to fix it up, trying to make it look nice. We've got a new sign that's coming, and we've gotten it permitted for that. So I'm trying to keep it up, take good care of it. I realize that's a major section coming into Elon and that you want it looking nice. It's valuable for me to do anything, anybody to do anything else with it. So it'll be a, there'll be a self-storage facility there for a long time to come. It was my guess, assuming Americans continue to love their stuff. And if we get to where they can't afford their stuff anymore like they have been for whatever reason, then maybe we'll have to turn it into another usage, but it is just not going to happen. So, you know, I think with the zoning across the street, the grandfather in issue, and the no change, what, so you would even know that we've expanded the facility, I think it would be a win-win, y'all increase your tax base, it's not going to increase traffic, headaches or anything else on that corner, and it'll, you know, and we're not putting, I'm not putting multi-story up, it's too complicated, and it's too expensive on that type of property.
Well, I mean, under your current, under your current zoning, you could have an adult entertainment facility there, so I mean, that kind of supports your argument, okay?
Well, I thought I could make the Elon Mustang Ranch or something here, you know, and, but I, you know, but I don't, I don't, that's not, you're right, I could do something very un-unflattering, how about that, with the property? And I have no intentions to do it, and anybody that bought it from me would have the same same intentions. I'm very fortunate to have it, I try to be a good citizen, we try to run a clean shop and keep it up, and I'm glad to be here. So thank you, and thank you for considering, no, no, very much. And I, when I talk about the lucrative of the self-storage, I say that not braggadocious at all, but only to enforce the fact that even if I sold it, nobody else is going to come in and do something different with it. You can't, you can't generate that kind of cash flow from anything, so anyway.
Well, thank you so much. And this is a public hearing, so are there any public comments? Any comments online? All right. Well, thank you very much. We will close that public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you for considering for me, too.
Is there an opportunity to change this agenda around so that our guests can do their thing? All right, awesome. I'm Mr. Murphy, which item are you here for?
Uh, myself, and this is Normie, I'm here for solid waste services.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead, and we are going to bump up under new business, let her be solid waste and recycling. Okay, so who is presenting this?
Indeed, I think our manager wrote the staff report.
I know, I didn't, you all weren't prepared.
Provided to him by by Mr. Murphy. I'll just do a really brief introduction. Our our contracts, both, we have separate contracts for recycling and for solid waste, two different companies, both of those expire July 1st of this year or June 30th. And so we put out an RFP for both of those services and asked either they can come in separately or as a bundled package. We received two responses, and David Murphy, of course, who was our assistant public, works We received two responses and uh, David Murphy, of course, who was our assistant public uh, works director was tasked with reviewing those, um, sort of teasing out the, the pluses and the minuses there and making a recommendation, which he did uh, to myself and to uh, Mr. Rodner. And tonight uh, we'd like to uh, ask the board to um, award a contract, contract based on the information that we've received uh, to GFL for both solid waste and recycling and to authorize the town manager to execute the contracts. And I'm sure there's more that, that David's had his hands on this and, and he can certainly speak to more detail about how the bids came out.
Governor ruined me calling him Mr. Murphy. I'm looking around like, damn yeah. Nobody said Smurf. Um, the bids were very competitive. Uh, we did communicate back and forth with both of them. And representatives from Republic, um, for a couple of changes, uh, Republic did lower their, they lowered their cost from the the original bid, but GFL was still slightly better overall. Republic did say in their response that they were not interested in recycling only. That, you know, they would do trash, they would do both, but they would not do just recycling. That would have been a cheaper way to go had they committed to that. Um, like I said, they were willing to move on the price a little bit. Funny thing is, is we're currently paying 1183. The bids came in originally lower than that. They, they were trying to work their way to get it. Uh, and you know, our decision to go with GFL, we have a long time relationship with both. Uh, very long with, with both companies. Uh, the determinant factor, I mean, you guys had the criteria. They would look at the determinant factor of, is all those 26 weeks per year versus 52 weeks per year, we've had better service uh, comparatively to with GFL. We've had troubles. Uh, like Pam brought it up. I do a call up for her. Well, I did a call up for her every month. I guess I'll send it to you for a while. Uh, and I think January, which that was unusual, we did have a little bit of weather. However, both companies had to deal with that. Forty percent of the phone calls that came into public works in January were manufacturers, solid waste related. That means it was some litter, this tall trash month. So that's, that's basically the history behind it and the reason for the recommendation. They moved on our cans because we currently own recycling cans. Uh, the bid, the RFP requested that we get out of the bin business because one, we don't want to have to store 100 cans, 150 cans. Two, we have to order 50,000 at a time. So you got to keep uh, $50,000 worth at a time. Let me rephrase.
Cans.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, even 50,000 is a lot of cans. But uh, we wanted out of that and they were requesting that they would, they didn't really want our cans, which I understood. And uh, so we reached back out. Her and I had discussions and I thought we weren't interested in selling the cans because of the age. I mean, we've got our money's worth out of them. I request is that you use them as they are now and you just replace them as they deteriorate or you know, new homes are built. And so they changed their, their stand on that and agreed to that. So both sides moved to both. That's just pretty much the meat and potatoes of it.
Well, it's always the mayor's house that the trash gets missed, just for the record. I feel like I'm the one that always has to call.
At that time.
No, it does.
The last time, or actually the last time, but you were hopefully going to be mayor.
Okay.
I mean, I, I tried not to ever, 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 never, ever use that. But after the second or third time, I was like, you know, I mean, it's bad enough, but we have all the women that lives on this road and y'all missed it three times.
I think it's been missed at least once because my husband made the comment that they missed the mayor's house.
It could have happened since. I do remember. I usually don't collect hard, but I was like, man, if y'all gonna miss anybody's, town managers and don't miss the, no, no, no.
Even so, if you had been the only one that was missed, it wouldn't have been quite so bad as what, um, you know, I mean, public works takes the calls or two ladies who are up front take the calls. Sometimes I take the calls. Sometimes Rich takes, takes the calls. And um, it's been a significant uh, drain on, on resources just to respond to the um, the service issues that we've had. Um, and so that does, even though the numbers balance out pretty closely, um, the, the, the service history does influence this decision.
How many years was that grievance?
It's a five-year contract with two, two-year extension. So it's a five-year and it could possibly go to nine.
At the same pricing or?
I don't know. Pricing will go up per, per the be a little go up per CPI, which is sort of same thing that happens currently with both GFL and and Republic. I mean, I guess I should, I should note, it's just it's just obvious, the elephant in the room, the recycling, you know, I mean, I put it, we put it in our budget. We have to like 500% the request and that's about where we landed. So maybe, but it's just a difference in the, in the day and age of recycling. Obviously, Canada don't, no more. Uh, we had very well-negotiated contract with them, you know, very long time ago. So they're, they've been, you know, they've been eating, they've been eating it for quite a while. And so I mean, they have no choice. However, they do in the contract, they take all the burden because we're not, we're doing, they're picking it up and we're done with it once we pay them. So we're not burdened with what happens after the fact.
And, and just to, to that point, um, you have a cost summary in, in your packet. Current total budget for recycled solid waste is about $320,000 and it will be going up to about 427,000. So we're, that's a hundred thousand dollar increase. Um, that we'll be facing. I suspect part of our budget liaison meeting coming up, you know, whether whether solid waste fees need to be looked at as well. Right now we generate about $220,000 on solid waste fees.
I'd save all the numbers for later, but I'm now the town's currently for solid waste. Obbage, recycling for yard waste and bulk. That's your three services under your solid waste fee. Town is currently $9 a month. The North Carolina average is 1583 per month. So I mean, uh, we've been very kind for a long time.
So we're going to use the cans, we're going to continue to use the cans that we have in our houses now.
The recycling cans, yes. Uh, trash bins.
They're going to be new. We're going to bring new.
Trash cans and they'll get everything swapped.
Charge an initial.
It's all included.
Oh, it's all included. The existing solid waste cans are owned by Republic?
Yes.
Are they owned by, are they not owned by us?
The trash bins are, the recycling bins are.
So what happens to those?
They'll go back to the trash bins. We'll go back to Republic.
They like come pick them up? How does that work?
Never had to do it. So I'll probably lean on her for how they.
They usually do. I mean, I've had instances of other companies that run their fee, but yes, they'll, they'll, they'll come through. We'll work out some kind of transition plans with them and probably will deliver your new trash cans maybe a week early. And uh, then after they pick up the last trash week they have, then they'll have somebody typically right behind them picking up their trash cans.
So the most important question is what color will those cans be?
Black with a green lid.
A green lid?
They're not all green with a black lid.
Hey, my garage to match my.
Been doing this 32 years and you'd be surprised at what they want.
The second question of proof of application is with the recycling, oftentimes, um, oh, there used to be this nice clear, relatively clear instructions on the cans. And of course, they've all kind of gone away. I didn't know, um, are you going to be providing a kind of clarity to people on how best to recycle?
Well,
Mayor Catherine worked very hard on uh, grant for recycling um, to North Carolina. NC DQ, it was just because they're called Deeks. And so they have approved that grant and with that grant will be uh, can tags and all that type of stuff.
But also when we deliver the trash can, we usually like, we were getting newspapers of the little plastic sleeves when it rained. We'll include, you know, um, how, where to place, just simple instructions. We can also put um, some more information about recycling, just the same kind of information that you have now, but it kind of reminds everybody what to do as far as what to recycle and those kind of things. And I like, and our new recycle cans, they'll be, we have it hot stamped in the lids on what materials you can recycle. So you never have to re-decal them or anything. So.
I guess the biggest question now is, is our schedule going to stay the same?
Who's us to keep your schedule to the same? We, I didn't, you know, I, I picked up a couple of other towns for trash in the area. So we're getting one new truck, uh, at least. Uh, we're going to try to keep it the same. And if you're agreeable, we may look at, try to put the trash and the recycling on the same day. Uh, that way you only have to push carts out one day a week. And if we can do that, we will. If that's something you want, if not, we'll try to keep everything on the same day as it is.
Already missed the mayor's house. So we're going to, you don't want to inconvenience her.
Well, you know.
Put my trash can out just for the record.
If we do, it's something that we really, really would like, we would, of course, we wouldn't do anything different unless we went over it with staff. And then if we did have a little section of town that needed to be some way different, we would include uh, directions in that little packet that we give with everybody for their new trash can, that your new day is this. And usually we try to do it uh, the day after that way until everybody gets used to it. And I'm not saying, this is just saying what we usually do, but I, I don't foresee changing anything unless we see a way we can do it all the same way, if that's something you want.
And how are we going to let the residents know we're doing this change with, going to get a trash can in their yard, leaving their trash can out? Is that all encompassed in this deal? Or, or, or we're going to be spending some, some money with, of course, sir?
When, with, I mean, we've got a couple of months. Um, I don't know that we'll make the uh, I might push the deadline on the May 1st newsletter. Um, so we'll have the newsletter opportunity in May to alert people to the July 1 changeover. We will have website, Facebook, we'll do Elon connect calls as we've done. We have our water bill. We can put notices on.
So nothing new that's going to add money to.
Could we use any of the funding from the recycling grant to include that information? I don't know what's in the grant, but.
And I don't know when the money's available.
We're waiting on further direction next week. Uh, well, we're actually this week, I apologize. They were at a conference last week. So we're waiting on further direction from them, but I, likely we would not be able to use that funding.
Okay. The funding is specific to education regarding trying to reduce contamination in recycling and the funding, the funds are available July 1st.
Yeah, I just didn't know if maybe you could put a little blurb on something that we're sending out education wise.
Well, they're all going to, they all get a water bill. So that's your biggest one. I think the, the biggest key is money doesn't available to us till July 1st. So we would have to do it prior to that anyway.
And it's not as complicated as you think. I mean, uh, maybe a hundred thousand homes here and there. And when you roll it out, people, you get some, maybe some press in the newspaper or those kind of things between Facebook, neighborhood Facebook pages and those kind of things. So when, you know, the worst case scenario, a new trash can will show up in their yard and it'll have the information included with it. So.
Are we both being on this tonight? This goes on the next agenda. Okay.
I want to say whoever put it together did an amazing job. It was a lot of reading, a lot of research. So all those that put it together.
I was, I was staffed.
It was a very nice team effort. Lots of work.
No staffed. I just happened to be lucky enough to make some of the calls. Pam, Rich, Donnie. Mayor Catherine definitely a big time with that. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a lot of work.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Rich, would you like for me to provide, uh, provide a draft agreement so you can look at it before the next meetings?
And thank you for sitting through all that.
This is what I do. The worst one ever was, was at the town events and they were trying to do some livestock ordinances and they couldn't agree on how many goats equal the horse. Real day, you know. So anyway, so I, I've seen them all. So, but thank you so much. And we are local here in Alamance County. We have a facility over in Graham that we've been there for 30 years, I know. So anyway, but anyway, thank you so much.
Okay, let's go back up to ordinances and resolutions led abatement grant resolution.
Hey, uh, this was a late edition of the agenda. We notified by our here that the state announced a $77 million water infrastructure planning and study grant. Local governments, like to submit a, what we're asking for the board to do is adopt all grants resolution. And with that adopted, we'll be sending off to the state, which authorizes us to apply for grants. And what we want to apply for is capital-led payment study grant to help us identify portions of our system that need to be addressed. Help us with mapping and things like that. So that it's a res- resolution for you to adopt, send to the state and we'll get that, that funding from the state to be able to continue to take action on our, on the issues.
Any questions for Rich on this line item? I'm okay with moving not to consent agenda for the both. All right. The item to the consent agenda. Um, next is letter B, resolution of support for proposed improvements to South Williamson Avenue.
This would be so much easier if I had done it uh, at the time that the board first considered this, as we have a couple of few members who weren't um, introduced to this. I guess issue. NC DOT has been considering improvements to South Williamson from Lebanon South to Burlington's jurisdiction. Burlington City Burlington had actually put in for funding for a project that included St. Mark's Church all the way from uh, the shopping center all the way up here. Thank you, Burlington. I'm not sure if anybody here in Elon were even aware that they were doing that, but that proposal was to widen Williamson throughout that stretch to four lanes with a median uh, and a 110-foot wide right of way where Williamson is now 50-foot. So we uh, came to the board to discuss this. Uh, first of all, sort of rang the alarm bell with DOT and with MPO and said, um, I think our board needs to weigh in on, on this. This would be very impactful. And the board uh, was, they came back with three different design options, um, alternates to the 110-foot wide with the median. Um, we presented those to the board and the board selected uh, one that involves uh, no change to the lanes, still two lanes, except where there were left. except where there were left-turn movements, and that it would be widened to accommodate a left-turn lane at those locations only. That was the preferred option. The other options included center turn lane all the way down throughout the corridor. And the other one was no change, no turn lanes or anything, but to add sidewalks and bike lanes to both sides. By the way, all three of these options would include sidewalks and bike lanes on both sides. However, that third option of not widening at all, except to accommodate those, the bike lane and the sidewalk, would require a match from the town of twenty percent, and while we don't have estimates on the cost, it would be significant. So the board selected that sort of middle road option, which had the least impact to adjacent properties, because there would probably need to be some right-of-way acquisition near those intersections. And it would help keep the traffic moving on Williamson, and if, it does seem to be getting worse, even since we had that discussion, especially in the afternoons. What I wanted to do was follow up with a resolution to make your choice a little more formal and get those in the hands of the right people. The funding mechanism for DOT has pretty much been on hiatus. They're having some budgetary issues. That being said, this express design process that this project was being worked through, the last iteration that I've seen included that option of the center turn lane down the entire stretch. So I'd like to get this formalized through a resolution of support for the option that you selected last time, which was that middle road option. And I say that because it just had, it was not the really do-nothing option, but it was not the bigger option. And get that in front of the people at DOT and the MPO so that we have something more formalized on record for your preference there. And that is the reason for this coming to you tonight.
Were you all on the board then?
Yeah.
You were. You would just come on. Okay.
It was just, yeah.
I wasn't sure if you all had even been on yet. Okay.
And did include, so I don't have a presentation for you tonight, but it did include some information in your packet about what those cross-sections, sections look like. And there's not one, because it's a variable condition, this preferred option. It would have a center turn lane in some areas, but not in others. There's not really a cross-section that represents that. It's sort of a combination of the two E and three C that I included in your packets, where it looks much like it does now, except for the bike lane and sidewalks, except near those intersections where you'd have a left-turned lane added.
And so are you looking at the eighty? I mean, are you, you said a middle of the road, and I wasn't sure.
It would be, it would, it would perhaps go as far as eighty, near those intersections. And the remaining part of the corridor would be sixty-foot right-of-way, which would be increasing ten feet over and above what we have now. And of course, you know, details still to come later. Funding is still questionable. We know we've had a lot of requests for sidewalks. This, any of these options would include that. Having bike lanes would also be a benefit, I think. I think the bottom line is that it is a DOT street. They would likely, if the funding becomes available and it meets all the scoring criteria, some change is going to happen on Williamson, and it's my desire to have the board go on record as to what your preferred change is. This is not going to happen anytime soon, by the way, and yet, and yet I think getting your, your, your desires on paper is important now.
This is something that we would vote on at the next meeting, right? Or is it something that?
We would vote the resolution in.
Yeah, you could do it tonight. I have here, you know, that you'll be requested on the twelfth to do that. If you have any other, any questions, this would be the time to ask.
It's exciting in the sense that it would open up much more pedestrian bikes, that kind of stuff for that road, I think would be fantastic. I'm glad, though, it's not going to have to be a four-lane road, though. That would pretty much take away.
It was baffling to me why that was even suggested. Particularly because you reach the railroad tracks here, you can't continue that condition without taking down, taking out our downtown. And then what happens to the, to the traffic that you have encouraged to use this?
I mean, even still, to expand from the fifty-foot right-of-way to a hundred-foot, I mean, you're wiping out
post office.
A huge tax base, too.
Absolutely. The fire station, our fire station would be impacted, and we did show some of those exhibits when we brought this to you last time. And if, if you'd like to see those, I can certainly make them available and staff can present those to you on the twelfth.
I think it's stuff that we need to do. I think we've seen just a little bit of expansion. We've done sidewalks, it's been, where we're seen by the communities, just a short sidewalk to sunset. See the amount of traffic, foot traffic, and if it, it would only increase if it were to go further, it would allow more of our citizens the same privilege to use.
And we continue to get those requests, as the board is well aware.
All right. Well, thank you, and we'll keep that on the regular agenda. Moving on to all business, letter A, discuss the implementation of equality and sustainability committees.
Actually, prior to my coming here as town manager, there was movement to create a sustainability committee. Delayed until the new manager arrived, and then it got swapped through with COVID and everything else. So that goal of the board, it's still out there. Last year, the board also adopted an ordinance policy, a resolution to create an ordinance and policy review committee. Some people call it an equality committee. We now have applicants for both of those. And so the question really is, what is the process that you want to follow to appoint people or not to either of these committees? Do you want to set up an interview process with applicants? Do you just want us to bring you the names or, you know? Typically, we have an existing board vet replacements. We don't have that situation right now, so.
When was the last time you created a new committee?
Who, me?
I know, that's I meant.
It would have been the arts committee. And Kathleen, you've got names, and she would bring the person here, but here she is, or here he is, and okay. We're on the arts committee.
I mean, I think it's hard to find volunteers, and this is going to be a, both of these, I think, are going to be working groups. So I think it's going to be hard to get too choosy, but I also think that eventually we need to get to more of that formal process where, you know, someone on a committee is coming and introduce, at a minimum, introducing themselves. I mean, I had to do that.
I think we can do that on this one. I mean, they're very important committees. And so we just don't want somebody, and I know we can't be too choosy, we feel like, we long for volunteers to spend their time. Not everybody can be a Monty Allison on a planning board.
Well, the applications that I do have, have resumes attached. I can provide you with a copy of each application and their resumes, so you can read what their skill sets are.
I would like, I would like to hear why they want to be on these committees.
I guess a question I would have is, I know some other municipalities have done something similar, and what do we, what would we learn from the way they did it? What process did they use? They just voted on it from the board? Did we, did they interview them?
Well.
And how have they progressed? Because I think the thing we talked before is, what is their mission? From what I've read, having attended meetings, some of those become more of a gripe session, as opposed to, what are we trying to accomplish?
Well, I think that's on us as a board, and then with the staff, is to provide, like, this is what this organization is here for versus what it's not.
Because that, without clear instruction, if the media just found us, no, you go.
I think what I'm hearing is, is that we would bring them forward like we did the arts council. At this stage.
More than we do with the arts.
Well, yeah, and I think that what you just said, the question, why, is a really good one, but again, I wouldn't want to make it a big. I wouldn't want to make them feel like they were going to be left out if, you know, if, if, that's all I meant, just.
Maybe just some feedback from them as to, you know.
Interaction, exactly. Yeah, absolutely.
And I think Monty's right, right? So we've got these applicants, but we do need to, like, personally, like, I have an idea of what I would, as a board, need to decide what we think about this ordinance review committee. I think we've kind of talked in the resolution about it, about what we want them to do. Their task is to look at our policies, look how it's implemented, that's the direction, the energy solution. I, I don't know, me personally, I don't know the task. It's like, cool, we want, we want our town to be energy-sufficient by this year. And they're like, yeah, me too, but what are, what are they doing? And I think that goes to Monty's point.
Well, the, when we made that agreement, we said that that group would evaluate, you know, where we currently stand, make a proposal for where we want to go. But then also work with, you know, the university has some partners, Randy knows some people around, what's the cost associated with those things? Because, you know, the reason that we said, let's do a committee versus adopting a resolution was because we want to make sure that whatever we resolve is feasible. So, you know, if we're going to be, you know, whatever, carbon neutral by 2050, is that realistic versus doesn't need to be 2075? Or what's the cost of that? And, you know, like, right now, we know that there are no electric cars that are working out for police departments. Our police department, yeah, has looked, there's.
They're certified.
That's right.
Well, there is one certified, but they're returning them, from my understanding.
Okay.
And so I could be off on that, but I know when I talked to the assistant chief about it, he said that there were police departments who had ordered them, and they weren't working as expected. So, you know, those are things that this group up here and our staff doesn't have the time to, like, dedicate just to that. So that group would be dedicated to that, where the equality group would be dedicated to equality.
So we're basically putting together a framework for them to work off of, for certain, you know, for sustainability versus the quality, kind of that type framework for them to go forward with, instead of just going, okay, we agree with what y'all say and then stop.
Like, like, like I heard Monty say, and I'm going to speak specifically as for a moment, sustainability, is that in the resolution that we brought to you all, there was a framework of putting together a committee. When you're talking about costs and things like that, you're really requiring almost a sense of a little bit of expertise, or at least someone who can do these research things. So my sense is, is that we would see kind of a combination on both groups that they would be maybe looking to other communities or other situations that are working, and maybe, maybe can work off of that. And the other thing is, is that they might be able to address through advisors, or maybe we might bring in some people who may have some expertise. Not necessarily hire them.
Right.
But maybe bring them in to, to speak one time, you know, so that they can get, they can gather information, gather information that can then inform staff.
Yeah.
So my, my sense is, is that they would not be representative of the whole committee. They might be the ongoing committee, but there might be some other people who would come and go, who might not necessarily be even residents, you know, but might be people that could be help in advisory resources. Resources.
Yeah, and I think, I think too, we have to be very careful, because we are very short-staffed. And so if we were to, in, you know, I think we need to decide, all right, when do we implement? Because I think that we need to be fully staffed before we can take on additional committees that the staff would have to engage with.
Well, you're, you're talking about, you're talking about that this, that these groups could be like actual working groups that would actually be putting together real life, all kinds of stuff that the staff wouldn't be involved in. I think that's absolutely not true.
No, the staff, similar to every other committee, there's a staff person who oversees that committee.
One of the things you're seeing already is that the sta, the staff's going to always need to be on board, one way or the other. And they're already doing that, and they're doing a great job. I mean, we're getting the LED lights put in. I mean, these are, these are like steps, you know, no one ever thought that we would be inventing the wheel, you know, for, you know, the science. Like you said, getting the university, having people from the university there would be extremely important. And I've already talked to some of the folks in the environmental settings over at the university, and they're, they're highly interested in getting going on this. So when it comes to the NDO type, obvious, you know, obviously a, a more of a, moving in maybe even the terms of a possibility of a human rights commission-type format, I mean, I don't know, but we might have to have some advice. Nowhere is just some advice to see what are some, what is working in some other communities and that kind of stuff. So I'm just thinking, this is a really good first step. Let's get these committees off the ground. And then empower them not to sit around and look at each other and say, what are we going to do? Because exactly what's Monty's going to say is, it's just going to get into non, not effective work if we're not careful.
Well, and I would, you know, Mayor Sharp is, is right with our staff. So I understand what you're saying with we need to get it off the ground, but, you know, Rich can only wear seven hats, like, making him wear nine might be tough. And, but, but nonetheless, I do think we need to get them off the ground. And as far as the, these types of committees, I don't want to, I know me personally, I, I need to be careful. I don't want to dictate what these committees do. I want them, so I, the equality one, for instance, I want to give them the framework. And if they want to have a sunset where they, like, right after a year, we think that the members of this committee decide, we don't need to go anymore. Then, okay, I want them to decide that. But if they, within that year of work, they decide, hey, I think we can do more stuff. I think this would be great for the town. We want to keep it going. Let them continue to, to carry on how, how it goes.
So we're back to them, just the idea of bringing them here. I think the process, are y'all feeling the same about that?
I want to bring them here, but I.
Give Rich as much direction as we can here.
Let me, let me, let me just say one thing. The reason why I even brought this up is because I have these applicants back. And, and I don't want to lose them.
That's right.
So I, I want to tell them, I, I emailed them back, I said, thank you for your interest in serving the town. We're in the early stage of formation of each of these committees. As soon as I have an update, I'll contact you back. That's why I'm bringing it to you, because I need to tell you something.
Something, they don't really know what expectations are.
Well.
I think they can make their own.
They read the resolution. I pointed them to the resolution that you all adopted.
That's what I wondered, because the form that they provide.
And this is on the website that they saw this?
Yes.
So that would be a big help to us, you know, to go back and review that, but you've got real applicants. We don't want to let them just sit.
So I guess it goes back to the size of the group, too. For example, if you had two people that applied, and that's all applied for sustainability, I'm sure there'd be more. What's the expectations? I mean, is three, is it thirty? What, what are we looking, because we know, like you said, it's very difficult to get volunteers. And it's kind of demoralizing. You sign up for a committee, and there's only two other people to participate on it.
Are you saying that we have to have a certain number to begin?
No, I said we had to have an expectation that, and marketing tests, it's hard to get people downtown.
Yeah.
And other committees, art committees, hard to get volunteers in.
I think we've seen, what, five or six sometimes at meetings, maybe, maybe we could get up to eight or nine, if we could, but we don't need to be much bigger than that, I don't think.
I mean, it would be great if we had forty applications and people wanted to be on a committee, wouldn't that be too large?
How many do we have?
Yeah, it would.
Four. I don't know which, which name you all want to call it, the Equality Committee. I have five. I have five and for the sustainability, I have two.
So why don't we have them come to next month's work session and have a discussion with them, make sure they understand. You know, ask them the questions that we want to ask them. And make sure that they understand, you know, that this is going to be a working committee, it's not just show up to a meeting once a month. Which is probably something that we need to clarify in all of our committee volunteers.
Well, I think it's still tough, goes back to what what Monty is saying, like, I would love every committee to show up once a month. Um, and be a working committee, but what are they gonna work on? Um, and maybe they come up with it, right? Maybe they talk about, hey, maybe we, this is what we have as a board, an idea that we want you to do. Do you think you can put a year's worth of meetings together to make it happen?
Well, I think we have to follow the resolution that we adopted. Case of that, and this is your framework to work from, we also have to assign a staff person to each one. Or Rich has to assign a staff person to each one, that's not for us to decide, and then that staff person needs to. Look at the resolution that we adopted and develop it from there. I don't think that it's not, I think.
By next month, I can make sure that we can have more people on the sustainability committee.
Just direct them to the website.
To the extent that we have a resolution on on the one and guidance on the other, on the sustainability. You know, that could be part of the discussion you have with them. And they can move forward with that in mind, I know on the policy review committee. Resolution included, that you can make recommendations for changes and or things that we don't have policies on, so. It doesn't, and we think that this would be worthwhile if we stayed together and pursued these issues. That becomes, you know, that becomes a board decision in the future when when it gets to that point.
Yeah, and I think in that resolution, we said a year with the option, didn't we? Up to them.
The other thing I think was with with getting committees like this that I think are important for for the board. Just reading about, you know, Meban, they have a racial equity committee. And, you know, we as a board, our our main committee that we trust and value is the planning board. And so when the planning board comes with a recommendation, we take that recommendation as. All right, the planning board did it, right? Like, there there's some credibility behind it. We're gonna, if we're gonna really, I guess the committee's gonna have to decide how credible they are and prove prove to us. But you know, it's, I also think it's a a waste of our citizens' times. I mean, the volunteers to be on these committees, if they do put together a recommendation, and we just are kind of like, nah, you know what? I just want to make sure we are.
I mean.
Really treating these people.
Rich, do the, will they decide their own leadership in terms of? Okay, I guess I have to be someone that would probably be willing to facilitate it, the the meetings and things like that.
Well, when they come to us with the recommendation, if the sustainability committee comes and assists us with the recommendation. And we are the fun, but you know, planning, when it comes from the planning board, like, all right, planning board. You know, they saw it, they got it, and they their meetings, and we know they're.
I I, the only difference being, planning board has a strict set of guidelines. That they have to review against. So it's not, we think this would be a great idea, let's recommend that happens. Which, you know, could it could come from a non statutory committee, which is what we're creating. So ultimately, as the policymakers, you need to weigh that, whatever whatever it may be. We we think the town needs to be carbon neutral in eighteen months, you've got to weigh that, is that a viable policy for the community?
I guess my point for bringing that up was with the Mebans, their committee, the racial equity committee. They're just getting backlash to the boards, feeling like the board's not listening to them. Right, they're like, hey, you created us, they had forty plus applications. And seven people, they picked seven people, then three of them quit, and they picked three more, we need to be careful when we move forward. The public, and I think we dealt with this planning board, they just picked three more applicants, the board did. But needless to say, this committee started publicly backlash in the board, saying, hey, you created this committee that you're not listening to. Or thinking about listening to, so that's just an issue that we could be creating.
Well, we resolved to create it. So we need to move forward.
So it's gonna be the quality, we're gonna be helping in some ways, and so staff to be helping to help. Hence the quality or what the output could be of these committees. And and so, you know, it's gonna be some trial and error, because we don't have a lot of existing ordinances. And guidelines and policies to to guide them, so it may be a little tough, it may be a little up and down at first. But you know, back to sustainability, really about becoming carbon neutral, it's about. Looking at the viability of an electric car, the viability of in public works. Maybe even making recommendations that we might find some way of creating some incentives for builders. To make sure that they're adding green into when they come in to do developments in the community, those kinds of things. Land use policies, all that kind of stuff, because I know there was some talk at one time that, you know, people were coming and getting leases for. Solar fields and stuff like that, we don't want to be surrounded by solar fields, I think I heard someone say. So you know, these are great questions, and these are great things that that this group could work on, help to uh, to address. It's not about becoming carbon neutral, we're not, we don't have that kind of power.
No, but I think it's that groups. That is their job to make those decisions, what does it mean? And what are they going to recommend to us? And but a staff person has to be assigned. So that's the key, so step number one, bring them in, next work session. Step number two, a staff person has to be assigned. Just like the Parks and Recreation Committee, you know, you show up, Phyllis has an agenda, that's what you work from. Same way, you show up, staff person has an agenda, that's what you work from. If there's open items, then there's open items.
And if we find a big problems, we'll make some changes.
We're really doing a work session on that.
Yeah, I know, all right, moving on, we don't want to do anything with that, right? Like, we're. All right, I'm moving on to new business, um, League of Municipalities delegate appointment. Diane, are you gonna give us a little background on that?
Yeah, basically, every year before they hold their annual conference. Every municipality in the state of North Carolina has to have a an appointed delegate. Whether you attend or not, it's just required if you're part of the league. And so the deadline for the appointment is the thirty first. Of this month, and the conference is the twenty sixth through the twenty eighth of April.
Um, was anybody able to attend City Vision? I think that that's the most important question, in my opinion, is if somebody is planning to go, then you should probably be our delegate this year. I wanted to go, but I'm not a town for work.
And delegates could be whoever you choose. Wouldn't that be staff? It can be staff, it can be elected officials, it's not limited.
Oh, so it doesn't have to be one of us, what do they vote on?
Yeah, the Board of Direct.
Are you going?
Uh, I am out of the office that Thursday and Friday of the that week. Like the twenty eighth, twenty ninth, this is leading into that. I have so.
Is anybody from our staff going?
When it's like a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Yeah, it's terrible, can we share that feedback? Like, if you want people who work to show up at things, don't have it in the middle of the week.
Now, this is the thing, I and I shared it with Rich. But you have to, you don't have to attend every day. But you do have to pay for the entire conference, you can't pick and choose what piece of conference.
Okay, so we can assign a delegate and that person not go, and we don't have to pay.
And that is that the town paying?
The town pays, yes. This was, this year is in Wilmington, it moves.
Anybody want to go to Wilmington?
Well, well, just.
Do you want to go, Mary Catherine?
Well, yeah, um, that's perfectly fine. I'll share with Rich, and and this is just conversation we haven't really finalized. But with me being the incoming president for the association, the clerk's hat has an actual. Portion of the league conference.
Why don't you just say that you wanted to go?
It's not that I want to go. The thing of it is, it costs two hundred and fifty dollars and 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 see, I hadn't planned on attending every day of it. So I thought that two hundred and fifty dollars was like a waste of money. But that's the only way I can attend the clerk part of it, is to pay for the entire conference.
Can we just have Diane and Mary Catherine go to City Vision and Mary Catherine can be our delegate and Diane can go?
Or the day that it is the clerk thing, can you?
Well, I think it's also a good experience for Mary Catherine to experience the event.
That's a separate, I mean, I. Two hundred and fifty dollars is not a lot to go to a conference. So if 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 any employee wants to go and their supervisor agrees and it comes to me, that's fine.
And really, that plus two nights of travel and hotel, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's that's not close enough to, that's not close enough to to they trip it to.
But it's in our budget as the Board of Aldermen. I mean, if all of us wanted to go to City Vision, guess what, we'd all be going to City.
Yeah, and we would, the town is in your budget. And there's money in the planning budget.
I think the money's not the issue, it's just, who do you think should go is what I, we might. Whoever wants to. I I mean, we we've had, we have a pretty open training philosophy, if somebody. Can get value in for the town, then they get, you know, that's fine.
I've been thinking about going too. But seriously, look, we got that the thing the other day, but I would rather you guys go, but I can pay my way to do it.
It's covered, we've got it.
I think you should all go. We can't tell staff.
But we need a delegate, so who is going for sure, because we have to vote right now on a delegate.
Mary Catherine, she should be our delegate.
No, well, is it okay?
One day, right?
I I just want to attend on one day.
What is, when is the delegate meeting, do you know?
It's usually the third day, I think, I don't have. It's usually the third day, I don't, I would have to pull up my email.
And it's just a vote. So so point who you want to appoint and. Inside, you know, and we'll figure out who wants to go.
Well, we need to make make a motion.
I make a motion to appoint.
All in favor, say aye.
All right, get the vote on.
All right, motion carries. See what happens when you raise your hand? You'll learn.
She wants to go on the Cape Fear River boat tour.
I can't, because we have an LMO meeting, so I'll be, I will be, I will be.
At the LMO meeting?
Yeah, on the, on on the Zoom.
On the boat? All right.
It looks fun, the agenda this year.
We are going to move on, I hope you can go, I would really like for. At least one person on the board to attend. And I'm telling you, it's gonna be awesome, because the Mayor Association was awesome. Reports, town manager.
Quickly, uh, music this Friday night on the plaza, that isn't a plaza yet, but we're calling it a plaza, so. Under the tent. Gianni Palmarini, Elon student. Uh, who has a wide range of repertoire of different genres that he plays, so. Groove on Friday night under the tent, bite the eat and then enjoy the music. It's last week, we had Carolina cut ups in their bluegrass music and that place was hopping.
Things were going pretty well when I drove by.
Yeah, we hit thirty five, forty people there at one point and. Five or six people up front dancing, most of them under eight. They had a blast, so that's this Friday, and uh, most of you are aware, I suspect that. Today is Pam's last full time day with the town of Elon. Have arranged to have her continue working as a part time employee to finish up the LMO process. Be remain on the payroll for. Till we're done.
You be coming into Elon?
I'll take you to get coffee.
Yes, you will.
Long ride for.
Not daily, but I will be, yes.
Is that it? Oh, wow, okay. All right, we're.
I can give you more, but it's late.
We're gonna start down here and just go down the line, skipping me, so Randy, you're first.
I'm so glad that we went so late to make Pam have to stay to the bitter end.
This is, this is not what is normal.
He said, oh my god, what did I get into?
I told her they were always like this.
Um, I really have very little to share between the last meeting and and now, since we had such a short interlude, so.
Glad to see a great turnout, it's good to see citizens show up. I wasn't able to come earlier to the reception, but I wanted to officially. Tell you how much we appreciate what you've done and that definitely miss you. And looking forward to working with with Carrie. Best of walking, we we hope to see you some coming back.
Absolutely, thank you, Mark.
I'm gonna echo the sentiments of seeing the people out tonight, you know, I think we had fifteen people speak. I received one email, terrible emails, but did we get any more emails than that, that this person spoke, who sent the email? That's the only email we got. And I know it's a tough topic, but I I really appreciate that, that's what we want, that's what we need. And then Pam, man, you know, I've I've avoided you, I didn't want to look at you. Because.
He doesn't even want to see you.
No, I mean, so Pam has, since she's been here for the four years, I mean, she has been so awesome to me. Coming to the restaurants and just speaking to her. Just as a merchant and and having her in in the town, and then when I decided to to run for Alderman. I could confide in her and I talked with her, and she was always there to to be an ear for me. And to give me words of wisdom, and I really going to miss you. You've been a great friend and colleague, and I think the town has that. Has took a step forward with you at the planning department. And I'm glad it's only part time moving forward.
Part time here and full time elsewhere.
That's right.
I'm sure it's gonna be nice to be closer to your home, less of a drive, but you're, I'm sorely going to miss you.
Same, but but I know how to find you.
I hope so.
And 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 by the way, there are no words that somebody in my profession. Longs to hear more than that they've brought their department or their community involvement. Or left their community better than they found it, I mean, truly, that I appreciate that very much.
Good luck to you.
Thank you.
I can't say it any better than Mark or Quinn said, so we just wish you good luck, Pam.
Okay, um, all right, well, we have the Neighborhood Coalition event, it was very nice. We had a great time, so we had volunteers head out and speak with students who are in rental properties throughout downtown. And I was just a really good opportunity to connect, one person called me ma'am, so.
And you connected with them.
Yes, I wanted. But it was, it was really good, um, and even the less positive communications were really good. I felt like they were really beneficial and, you know, just to say to them, you know, here's all of the phone numbers. If you need to reach me, you call Town Hall, if you need to re, if you have a water issue, you call Public Works, you know, whatever. And whatever it is, you know, it was just a great opportunity to connect with them, minus getting called ma'am. Then the other thing is, you know, definitely Pam. Um, then the other thing is, you know, definitely Pam, you leaving. Um, I've said this once before, and Ron Klepsik told me never to say it on record, but I'm going to, it just sucks. Um, so, you know, we will miss you, and we're certainly happy that Carrie's here to step in. And help Mary Catherine, um, you know, warm the ropes as well, so, um, we wish you nothing but the best. I will be away, um, Thursday through Monday. So, um, I have already told Diane and Rich both that if they need me, call Mark. So if you need me, call Mark, um, he will be your acting mayor while I'm not here.
So many declarations of emergency.
Twenty-fifth Amendment.
Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
May I ask you all to please take, I have containers that you can take food with you.
You don't have to tell me twenty. Charlotte tomorrow, my family will love that one.
I want a sandwich so bad.